We are going to get started. Aloha mai kako. My name is Samantha Decourt. I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Maili Neighborhood Board, number thirty-six, and I am calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November twenty-first, 2023. We are meeting in person at the Nanakuli Library and virtually on WebEx. We have a very full agenda tonight, so to keep our items moving, I will go over some rules of speaking. If anyone wishes to speak, I will ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone. Those joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes. Officials' monthly reports under three minutes, and presenters under ten minutes. Sergeant-at-Arms will be keeping time, so please end your comments when the timer goes off. I will also ask you to conclude your comments. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Be free to share your mana'o on our agenda items, and remember to treat each other with respect and engage with the spirit of aloha. With that, we will be going to our first agenda item, Honolulu Fire Department. Oh, before we do that, we've got to pulei. That was the second time, I almost forgot that. Okay, all right, so we will go ahead with the pulei. Board members, would anybody like to say the pulei? Okay, no, keep it down. Okay. Okay. Do we have another microphone down here? Oh, perfect. Okay, board member Tektar?
Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you that everyone is here to attend and took some time out of their busy lives. And may you help each member on this board to show respect as well as wanting respect. Bless the rest of those that are on their way, and thank God for this day in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Well, before we get started, we want to recognize former Board Chair Patty Kahana-Moku Teruia. We're so excited to have her here. I'm sure she's gonna be eyeballing me the entire time, but that's good. I welcome it. She's been an amazing mentor of mine, so thank you so much for being... Okay, we do have Fire Department, but I don't see them here, neither do I see Police Department. So HPD... Oh, HPD is online. Oh, okay, Sergeant Fumi, if you could unmute yourself and give us your report. Or I see Corporal Pagan.
Yeah, hi, can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, perfect, sorry. Good evening, Board, Chairman, Chair, members of the community, Corporal Pagan at Honolulu Police Department, Mr. Gate, Community Policing. And I have your stats for October. In October, we had twenty-six motor vehicle thefts, none in our area. We had twenty-one burglaries, two in our area. One hundred thirty-nine thefts, eighteen in our area. Sixteen unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, six in our area. There's a total of one hundred and thirty-six citations issued. There were six thousand four hundred twenty-one calls for service, one thousand thirty-five in our area. Just wanted to remind everyone that with the holidays coming up, our traffic division as well as the district has been doing a lot more of the DUI checkpoints and impaired driver enforcement. So we ask everyone to not drink and drive, spend time with your family, but do it appropriately. Too many options to get a ride home if you decide to drink. The other thing is, we do have the Honolulu City Lights is happening on the second. Kapolei City Lights is happening the evening of the ninth. And I'm sorry, that evening as well, we're gonna be having the Blue Light Christmas and Christmas on the Avenue, Nanakuli Avenue. So we do remind everyone to be prepared for most of Nanakuli Avenue being blocked off for that event. I believe they're blocking it off from about two in the afternoon, I believe. So just make arrangements to find other ways around. And then we also have the Waianae Christmas Parade that day. The Waianae Christmas Parade, starting at the Waianae Boat Harbor, ending up at the Waianae Mall. That's all I have. Open for any comments, questions, or concerns.
Okay, very good, open up for questions, board members. Questions for HPD, Board Member Myers, and then Board Member Corona?
Mahalo, Corporal Pagan.
Hi.
Are you ready for Christmas on the Avenue?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to see how you guys are doing as far as showing up on that night, because we're gonna be in recess in December. So I wanted to wish you and your crew and everyone at HPD happy holidays, and thank you for all that you do to help keep us safe, especially during the holidays and rainy season. So mahalo.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Board Member Corona?
Yes, sir. Is it possible with the metrics that HPD collects for the district and then when it's broken down by a sub-district from Nanakuli Maili and then the Waianae Makaha area, are you able to provide the yearly total metrics for the year? And then on top of that, provide a percentage compared to other districts on the island? Is that something that maybe you could... Is that something that could be provided for the January meeting? Because I know we're recessed in December. Thank you.
We can look into getting you the yearly stats. We should basically look at our normally board stats, except instead of for the six months, it would have all twelve months. I can, we can look into trying to provide the stats for district-wide, for the island-wide. That may take a little bit more time and effort on our guys' parts. And to be honest, November, December is extremely busy for us with all the holidays and parades and events and issues and stuff like that. But we'll see what we can do about getting the island-wide stats. You know, just a reminder that the stats that we provide to all of the boards is a standard across the island. And that was directed years ago, that this is the stats that we're gonna provide, and we're trying not to deviate where we give you guys a stat that now another district is being forced or asked to give because one district gets it and stuff like that. So they try to make it standardized across the island, knowing that there is stats available on the HonoluluPD.org website. But as far as the district stats, like I said, I don't have a problem having our guys pull up a twelve-month comparison and giving you guys that in January.
Okay, very good. Board Member Corona, you're good with that? Okay, awesome, very good. Community, questions for HPD? Go ahead, Chair Teruia.
Tess, Tess, thank you. Aloha, Patty, Teruia. I wanted to ask a question for Sergeant Fumi. Couple of weeks, you folks had a big arrest here in the Waianae Coast. So my question was this, is this the state enforcement team that came out? Or it was District Nine that did that, initiated enforcement of arrests, of warrants? Different arrests that you folks did. Was there anything on gaming that you folks did on that occasion during that statewide enforcement arrest?
Thanks for the question, Patty. Good to see you.
Thank you.
I believe there was nothing specifically geared towards gaming, game rooms during that enforcement operation. They did concentrate on warrants, and some of them may have been at the game rooms possibly. But yeah, it wasn't directed towards the game rooms directly. Yep.
All right, so thank you for that, and commend you folks for coming out and being consistent on keeping Waianae safe and working together to get the crime reduced. So we thank you for that. Aloha.
Thank you.
Very good. Community, anyone online, questions for HPD? Okay, seeing none. Fire is not here yet, so we'll move over to residents' concerns. So residents in the room, if you have any concerns, please make your way to the microphone, and then virtually raise your hands, and you will be called on. Anyone here in the room first? Carol, go right ahead. Just state your name for the minutes, please.
My name is Carol Pelikai, and I'm with the Christmas on the Avenue Committee, and I'm the Finance Chair. And then I'm also, before I do that report, I wanted, I'm passing out the flyers for Christmas on the Avenue, if you can share with your family and friends. I've been doing the Nanakuli Village Market Place, and we went from a daytime to nighttime market. And so our last market was this past Saturday on November eighteenth, and it was a total success. We had about fifty kupunas under attend doing activities. We had a full lineup of entertainment, and we had about forty vendors, who, and most of them are local from the Waianae Coast. So I wanted to just thank everyone for supporting the night market, and this was the last for 2023. So everybody's asking, so when's the next one? So we're still working on it. This was my last one, and so kind of retiring from what I do, and we'll be doing other things in the community. So we're working on getting other people to step up and take the night market. But it's definitely gonna happen in 2024, and probably from February, we're gonna be doing the night market. So I just want to give you update on that. For Christmas on the Avenue, as you see the flyer, we've been working on this from last February, this past February. And now it's only a couple of weeks away, and it's getting kind of nervous for us because we have still a lot of details to do before we have the event. So the event will be on December ninth. The time is from four PM to ten PM. And the road closes from one PM to eleven PM on that night. We have over a hundred volunteers, and what we're doing this year that's different from last year to protect our community is each block, we have three blocks that we're gonna close off from Third Road to Sixth Road. So each block will have a team of security and road closure, team that will be taking care of that block. And then we have also, the churches are working with us, the Protestant Church on First Road, then Anani Kapono Protestant Church, they're doing two thousand gifts for our children.
I'm gonna ask you to summarize a little bit.
Okay, so anyways, it's a lot of things that we're doing this year. Ninety-three-year celebration of the Nanakuli Homestead. We make ninety-three years. So we're going towards a hundred-year celebration in seven years. And we really looking forward to having welcoming our community, filling it with aloha and no incident. And you know, last year, we didn't have one Band-Aid or no fights or anything. So we're working hard together with the community to protect and make sure everything is safe this year. So please come to the event. And we invited the Mayor, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, everyone we're inviting to come and see what Nanakuli is like and join us and have a nice evening together. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you so much. Yes, please come out, December ninth, Nanakuli Ave. It's gonna be a great time. Thank you again so much. Anybody else in the room? If not, I'm gonna go virtual. Oh, go ahead, up to the mic. Just state your name, yes, please?
Aloha, everyone. My name is Alex Cowhee. My question really pertains to the DHL. Has to do with Nanakuli Graveyard. So I just wanted to know when they're gonna finish up putting up the fence and the gate, pretty much, because a lot of people hang out at night in there. They used to lock them up, but no more gate. Yeah, they fixing everything up. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else here in the room? We're gonna go virtual. Okay, Daniel, I see your hand up. Go ahead and unmute yourself and share your concern.
You can hear me, right? You can hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, well, it's not really concern, but I want to bring an update because my mother was here last month giving an update on the playbuilders that she's actually doing. So I actually have the poster right here with me. I don't know if you can see this, kind of. That's what she's doing right now. So the slight update that I wanted to give for everyone in the community is, you know, tomorrow is gonna be the last night for it at the Dole Plantation. But also, we're gonna be doing some free shows at Nanakuli High School, January fifth and January sixth at seven PM. Admission is free.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Please give our aloha to your mom.
Of course, yeah, she's actually doing the play right now.
Awesome.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Daniel. Thank you very much. Okay, if that's it for residents' concerns, we're gonna go ahead and move on to elected officials. So we're gonna go ahead and... Oh, hmm. Hoi Emergency Management Agency, they were unable to join us tonight, so we'll see if we can put them on our January agenda. We'll move on to Governors Rep, Carrie.
Can you hear me?
Presentations. Thank you. I apologize. You're right. Excuse me. All right, so our presentation, it's not the end of the year, Sam. But yes, so we have with us Department of Parks and Recreation. We have our Deputy Director, Keha Pu'u, and she's gonna be talking about Mailei Community Park Cooling Project. And so with her, we also have Roxanne Adams, who is with Urban Forestry, and Lana. We recognize you, girl, in the mask. Okay, very good. So go ahead and take it away, Deputy.
Hi, aloha. Good evening, everybody. Yes, so we have Manaka Haleo Umi. She's our complex supervisor out here on the Waianae Coast. And Roxanne Adams is our new administrator. I think she's met with some of you from our Division of Urban Forestry. And Ovoa Keha Pu'u, I'm the Deputy Director for Parks and Recreation. Thanks for the time this evening. And thank you, Kala mai for not sending that sooner. So we just have a few slides that we want to share about a cooling project that we want to kick off, and we want to kick it off here on the coast. Can you be my clicker to next slide? And so we're here tonight to share details about the project, but really, you can go to the next one. We are, so we're here tonight to share about the project, but we really are seeking community support for this project. We, you know, we want to get your feedback, any mana'o that you might have, and also helping garnering community support members, group and members to engage in this, in this project with us. Next slide. So the goal of our cooling project is to address climate change in our parks through... Can you go back one? Sorry, I might, yeah, yes, it is. Okay, so, no, 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 all good. So we want to build improvements in our parks in our high-heat index areas or communities. Our coast is definitely one of those to provide cool spaces for recreation and program activities. And so this is something new that we're undertaking. You know, climate change is real, and the city has an adaptation strategy that we are trying to align to. And so we want to start it here on our coast, and we are looking specifically at Mailei Community Park. We want to start our cooling initiative here because we have summer fun programs that we run in the summer. So we have utilizing this park, sports leagues. We're co-located there with Mailei Elementary, who also utilizes the space. There isn't a lot of shade. We can use more shade, especially since we have a lot of our keke in the park. Again, it's a high-heat area, and the hope is that, you know, we want to pilot here and start to expand to other areas. So part of the project, it's not air conditioning, it is shade and then tree planting. So that's how we want to promote cooling. And these guys are more expert at some of this stuff. So if you could, when we get to questions, I'm gonna, they will be answering. But I did want to share a little bit about Climate Radio Aho. So this is the city's climate adaptation strategy. They have twelve strategies. It's, I think it's in draft form, but they did a really great job, our Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency. They did a great job of putting this plan together. They engage with different community groups and members. You can Google it and find it easily online. But, so you know, so these strategies are looking at how we can prepare, protect and safeguard our island against impacts of climate change. And not just for now, but thinking about, you know, the future and generations to come, our keke, our mo'opuna, and so on. So twelve strategies are, for this specific project, we're strongly aligned to Strategy Twelve, which is, you know, cooling our areas. And so two of the actions that I called out is, one, around our updating and increasing our city street and park tree inventory, which Roxanne can share more about, and I think she's been engaging you folks in trying to do that here. And then also just cooling solutions. Next slide. So there's kind of two parts, like I said, to this project. What the first is shading concepts, and then the second is the tree planting plan. So the first concept is a shade concept. So at Kamokila, yeah, we have that shade over the park there. That's the only shade, I believe, we have over any of our place structures on the entire island. And I think maybe Auntie Patty can give us some history of how we ended up with that shade. But it's the only park that has that, and it makes such a big difference, you know, being in that area from being like at Mailei Community Park where we don't have that kind of shade. And this is something that we want to, we want to start to install and then expand. So we're looking at these sail shades to cover our existing place structure. We're also exploring some additional shading over the area outside of the playground, but close to it for those who may be sitting and watching their keke play. It may also shade part of our court. And then we're looking at other ways to cool our recreation building, ventilation systems maybe, and some other things. So this is the ideas we're exploring on the playground structure. And then the second one, next slide, is our tree planting concept. So this is what we're looking at, planting plenty trees. Forty, forty trees around the perimeter of the playing field and the fence line. We are being mindful of the space needed to maintain those areas. So the blue are the perimeter, and then the nine medium trees near the open areas and buildings. And then we're also talking about irrigation needs. Right now, for a lot of our tree planting projects, we're, it is, it becomes something additional for staff to do. So we've been asking a lot of community, for community help, to help us when we're planting new trees so that they can survive. This is where actually Roxanne should speak. I'm gonna let her talk about this part, and I know we're being timed too, yeah.
Aloha, mahalo for the opportunity to come into your community and talk story about trees. Yeah, so what we want to do is plant more trees on the outside edge. So when you have sporting events, you can actually like sit under the shade instead of having to bring your pop-up tent. So around the outside edge would have more shade trees. So those, the blue dots, those thirty-one trees, those are smaller trees. We call them excurrent trees. That just means they grow more upright than out. And then the orange ones are more decurrent. That's more shade-like trees for the school. So they have a shady area where they can play. And we do have, we do have some issues with being able to water. And the thing with newly planted trees is they have an establishment period of about eighteen months to two years. And within that timeframe, they need deep water. And so what we do, you may have seen these around, but we put these green bags around the trees. Those bags need to get filled up like twice a week. So we're hoping to work with community and with Mailei Elementary School to see if we might be able to do an educational program around cooling and then have them help us, assist us in watering. All of our staff is located in Waikiki, so getting out here twice a week is pretty difficult. So we're looking for any community assistance to get more shade into our parks, especially out here.
Very good.
And then just one last slide, I think. So I just want to reiterate why we're here. As Roxanne said, a lot of the planting that we do requires that early care. We realize though that forty trees is a lot in Mailei, so we, we're hoping maybe we can get some community support and then figure out some, definitely figure out irrigation for the area. But, you know, we, again, have come here to share what we want to do. We want to start it right here in this Kaiaulu, get some feedback or, you know, thoughts on the project, you know, the plan, the tree plan, shade. And then, you know, hopefully, we can, if you folks are supportive, get some help in engaging with others to help us plant and malama trees. Oya wale no, that's all we have.
Awesome, very good. Okay, we'll go to questions, board members. Board Member Myers, Board Member Corona, and Board Member Agustin.
Aloha, thank you for coming. I have a couple, so regarding volunteers for water, I was thinking Ulukia Kuku is right down the street. Yeah, and they, they've become a transitional shelter, so maybe some of the ohana over there would like to volunteer. I'm just thinking because they're right down the street. And then regarding the trees, what? I saw BJ Penn just last month, I think, or maybe a couple of months ago, saying something about that there's a law that bans fruit trees in public areas or parks and stuff. Is that true? Is there a law that bans fruit trees? That's one question. But the other question is, what kind of trees are you gonna plant in that area?
Good question. So I believe there is, I don't know if it's a rule or ordinance about fruit trees for different reasons, liability. You know, if people eat the fruit and get sick. Carrie, like who has, I guess, ownership or over the trees? So those are some of the issues that have been, I guess, some of the historical issues around fruit trees. That being said, we are working on our adopt art program and specifically planting, because that comes up a lot. People want to plant, they want to, they want to plant native plants and trees. And so I think our Urban Forestry Division is coming up with the kinds of plants and trees that we would be able to, people would be able to plant in our parks. I don't know if it includes fruit trees though at this time, not at this time, yeah.
No fruit trees at this time? Because I think what he was, the point he was trying to make was that the fruits can become food for those, so like red fruit, right? Ulu, I mean, not necessarily, I understand, with the liability of them climbing, but they can get hurt from a regular tree too.
Well, I mean, and eating, and then getting, you know, the food, the eating part too, is the, where city would carry liability. Because if you eat and get sick, people may sue. So I believe those are the huge legal issues.
Okay. Okay. Mahalo.
But thank you for that, and I get it.
Thank you. Board Member Corona?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And yes, that area definitely needs something out there. That park is used quite a bit. And then once the... That park is uh used quite a bit. And then uh, uh, once the DHHL project out there uh starts developing and coming in, a lot of homeowners will be out there, um, so I know they'll be using the park too. So um having that area shaded by that time would be good. Um, timeline, um, is that, is this an immediate? Is this, have you already procured the trees? Are you ready to execute? Is there, what's your timeline? That's my first question.
You you know what, and Ma'alia had it in our notes, and I forgot to put it in. So we'd, we we want to get started on some things, like in the new year, January, February. Ideally, we would like to plant these trees before the school year ends. We'd love to engage with Ma'ili Elementary. We haven't really engaged with them yet. But um, yeah, we would like to, we would like to get trees in the ground before the end of the year.
Okay, yeah, that was kind of going, that was going into my second question was about the DOE. Have you talked to the DOE and is, are these trees gonna be on the DOE property or just in the in the vicinity or in the uh the border of the park itself?
It's in park's property. I don't believe, have we talked to Ma'ili? I don't believe we have, but but, you know, maybe you folks have some connections with um the the principal and the staff out there. Um, but the trees are on city property. That being said, Ma'ili, you know, students do go out and use the field. They they do come on to parks property, so it would benefit, you know.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll try to reach out to the DOE, but out there, the principal. Um, my my final uh question comment is funding. Um, how is this funded and any operation and maintenance of it? So the trees themselves, uh, my concern is uh the trees, if they're planted small, uh, we, you know, there are gonna be vandals or people come out there and they 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 break the trees. So if they're not already kind of established trees themselves with significant earth earth to them, um, I'm concerned that the time and effort that you put into putting them out there for the community, that they're not gonna make it. Um, so the operation and maintenance of that, is that funded? Or is that once it's planted, you walk away and then revisit years from now or something? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, I'll let Roxanne address that part.
And when I meant O N M, the operation and maintenance.
I think that's why we want some of the community support to to help us, like, I think it would be good to have community ownership over these trees to hopefully dissuade the vandalism that happens. You know, we can malama these trees. We have ideas of having people name the trees, you know. We would love if the kids could help to plant them and, you know, we could plan a planting day around that. As far as care, um, Roxanne can speak to that. So we do have some some uh plans for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if any of you saw the news on about the Mayor's Arbor Day. We did uh planting out um in Kahuku at Kahuku Elementary School, and the kids really got into it. Um, one of the trees actually um was damaged, but not by a vandal, uh, was damaged by the wind. And as soon as it was daylight, they were already reporting that they had a damaged tree. Um, the kids came out, they helped to plant the trees. Uh, they only planted nine trees, but each each child in the entire school was able to participate in the planting of those nine trees. They then each class um adopted a tree, and then they named that tree. Um, so they're now gonna put out signs with the names and forever and ever, these trees were planted by um pre-K through sixth grade at Kahuku Elementary. Uh, we we do, these trees will be in our park. They will be maintained um by the Division of Urban Forestry. Uh, but, you know, having as many eyes on the land is helpful um when when people are involved in the planting and they they have ownership of those trees, they're more likely to protect them. Um, that's our hope. The trees will be planted in no smaller than seven gallon, so they'll be pretty big. Um, maybe two-inch caliper, um, not giant, but, um, and they will have stakes uh to help keep them stable um and protect them from people driving through, uh, which we see in a lot of our parks. Um, so that's the plan anyway.
I just didn't uh point to contact on the on the on the brief here, so is that something that we can get afterwards if we want to make further contact after this?
Yeah, absolutely. If you folks have cards or you can send me, I have the information. I'll send it over to the board. Okay, awesome. We got uh Board Member Agustin and then Board Member Hector.
Thank you for your presentation.
One more thing about fruit trees. There are opportunities, I think, for planting fruit trees in your community. Um, we have, there are different ways you can allocate community gardens, and you could make and establish a large of fruit tree grove that's managed by community members. Um, again, it's that whole ownership thing, right? So if people feel ownership over it, they protect it. Um, they tell their family members, no touch. Um, until it's ready, they can harvest, have harvest days, and then share with the community.
Thank you. So I have a question uh relating to the timeline, as uh David had mentioned. So this is a pilot program specifically for Ma'ili Community Park. Uh, when do you come back to report post? Do you have a date or deadline for that? And then post, are we able to then decide as a community where they get implemented? Uh, if it does become a successful pilot project?
Yeah, I think that would be great. Um, if, well, so part of it is funding, you know, you asked about that. So in our fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, we did get a budget add from council uh for tree planting. So that's how we're able to to fund that part of the plan. And, you know, we're looking for other operational funds for the shade. Uh, but we have put in a a budget initiative for fiscal year twenty twenty-five that we're calling a cooling initiative to expand on on projects like these. And so Ma'ili would be our first. We're hoping can be like a a proof point for success. Um, but we would love to, the plan, you know, so these areas, there's other areas too that we would want, but we would love to engage with community, with this neighborhood board, the other, to look at what other areas um we can expand this project to. Yeah, that would, we could do that. Okay, and then as for reporting back, uh, I think our next meeting is in January or December. So we're trying to keep ourselves on a on a timeline, but we will share back our um contact information to follow up. And then we can come back when we have um, you know, I guess, more so, a more solidified timeline. The engagement part, though, is where we would add feedback to, is where we would really love to get some support and input from you folks.
Thank you. And I know um Jermaine had mentioned about the fruit trees, but if the community input were to come through to say that fruit trees were supported, uh, would that be something that you would uh entertain for this pilot project?
Um, I don't, I think if it's appropriate for that area, but because it's a park and, you know, it's uh the perimeter is a playing field, I don't know that it would be appropriate. Not to say that we wouldn't consider it for other areas, but it it would be, I mean, we would have to go through some legal. Uh, yeah, uh, it, so it wouldn't be our decision alone to make on behalf of the city. We would have to go through some stuff, and assuming it would get approved.
Thank you. Please let us know how we can be of assistance to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Hector?
Yes. Um, thank you for this project, and, you know, I I believe you can get a lot of community support. Um, my question would be, as far as the water is concerned, are water rates gonna go up? And, I mean, we have someone here that we could kind of partner up with somehow. Uh, and I know this is a pilot uh program, which is awesome, engaging the children. I'd like to see more coconut trees, because honestly, that's our um, everything, fiber, tree, hats, we make, you know, factory, the the huts. We still do that. We weave, um, water, the coconut, that's life for us. And more fruit trees, even though it's not accepted, it's, we need to take care of our moku. And if that's our food and we're starving already, living out of canned foods, I think this was something that should have been done a long time ago. So hats off to you guys. Um, I'd like to invite you to um my Parks and Rec meeting that we started. Uh, I launched it this past uh Wednesday, it was the second Wednesday. So the next meeting will be December, the second Tuesday, tentatively, and I can get a confirmation. But the more people get involved, I I like to see how we can kukua. But the water rates, that was my question, are you guys gonna pay for that? Other than the fundings, you know, um, let's find out.
Yeah, I, our water, I definitely would increase, especially in the beginning. So as Roxanne was saying, those first two years are the critical years. I feel like that's like, you know, raising a baby and making sure they get to a certain age, and then, you know, okay, they're gonna be okay. So um, there would be increase, but um, once they're established, I don't know that they would use the same amount of water. Um, but I think the payoff, the, you know, the the return uh would be worth it. Um, because again, you know, we're trying to address climate change also right through this uh project. Also, we we, yeah, we we did pretty good on our water savings this year. We did have to cut back in Red Hill and all that. Um, so, yeah, but yeah, I'd be honest, yeah, we'd need more water. We will.
Awesome. Very good. Okay, uh, Board Members, all right, anyone from the community, questions? Okay, uh, Chair, and thank you.
Uh, aloha. So these questions are for the the parks. Um, thank you for bringing up the shade covering. Um, Kamakila Park was the only park that uh had the shade covering. We all know that. I think um uh we did put in, I think it was like ten years waiting for Ma'ili Community Park to get that appropriate shade covering. So a lot of our kekis at Community Park in Ma'ili, especially in Ma'ili, was a summer funds, and they were out in the hot heat, and we all knew that. I I'm surprised that the city took that long in getting the shade covering, so we appreciate that. I think the other CIP funding for the shade covering was also for the Kalana Amnauli Beach Park, uh apparatus area. So hopefully the board can support pushing that through. Um, and I thank you for this presentation on trees. Um, I mean, we all love trees. We need trees. We 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 want the shades and everything like that. Uh, my concern is the Department of Parks is that the maintenance, you know, we we come up with all of these different programs, but it's maintaining these trees. In twenty twenty-four, the administration had coconut trees all along Ma'ili Point, and that didn't last too long because there was a lack of water. There was no irrigation, no water. And so you just see these long stems, three of them actually. And so, you know, it was an outpour that we have these um beautiful trees, but it's always with the parks of maintenance. And I'll be very open to today, the parks, you know, we're looking at a parks. I'm not here to criticize you, but I think we can do a little better in our, in a lot of our parks. And, you know, I speak on Nanakuli Park, we've been struggling to get our uh CIP projects through the parks and make it um more feasible and usable for our kapunas that uh can travel from the car to the parks. So that's, that's another concern. Uh, regarding um Trax, Trax Beach, where you folks are gonna be planting in that area, I I wanna uh comment to um, get a hold of the Maha, uh Malama Learning Center, Pauline's side for them. They adopted the whole entire area and they planted native Hawaiian plants, the naupaka. Naupaka is plants that no need water, and so it grows very, you know, openly. And so we need to be out of, we need to think out of the box about when we come to water, preservation of water, who's gonna water it, how consistent. So we need to look at plants and uh trees that are very limited of taking water, and it's just different suggestions. Um, and then trees also bring um attracts, when you get these beautiful trees, they bring, they attract a lot of homeless out there. So that's another um problem that may come up here when you see all these beautiful trees that we have around there. So it's just little highlights of that. But thank you so much, Parks. Uh, appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, community, any other questions for parks? Uh, anyone online? No, no questions for parks online. Uh, I was at the, uh, I'll just make a really quick comment. I I was at the Arbor Day uh at Kahuku Elementary with the mayor, and it was really exciting to see how just engaged these children were and how at such a young age, they were able to really take ownership and malama these trees and care for these trees. And I think that's the idea uh of 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 why it's so important to bring something like this here. Um, I I do work uh closely with Ma'ili Elementary, so I would love to make a connection. I think that if we can bring the kids, because they're gonna be the ones to care for these trees for the next twenty, thirty years, you know. I mean, uh, so it's, it's helpful if we can get the kids involved, especially at that young age where planting, you know, as Roxanne saw herself, they were just, they just lit up. I didn't, I've never seen kids so excited about planting trees, and there weren't many of them, but they were really, they really surrounded themselves. And I think that that's gonna be a very positive thing to keep our um keke here in our moku um occupied uh and teach them the longevity of taking responsibility over those kinds of things. So um, so, so I would love to connect you uh with uh Ms. Takosone there and see if we can, if we can work together uh with the DOE to get our children involved. Um, because uh forty trees, is it? Oh, gosh, I just love it. It's so much. It's so like, yeah, I absolutely love it. So thank you very much for this. Um, and then I believe as we connected with the Chair of the Parks and Recs, uh, that we'll be able to follow through with your folks' efforts and then see what we can do to um get behind you, uh, whether that be to come out and give support and malama and kukua and just bring our resources. Um, you know, with the situation at Trax Beach, we see that uh our community really wants to get involved with these kinds of efforts. So I don't think that you'll have any problem um finding support, uh, short-term support and long-term support. So thank you for allowing um our moku to be uh the pilot program to this. Uh, I like the positivity of the start and beginning of a program that really is um providing a lot of educational pieces, but a lot of cultural aspects too, because our native trees are in threat of invasive species. So the more that we can plant, uh, any natives um would be helpful for our overall culture. Um, so thank you very much. We really appreciate you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Very good, okay. All right, very good. Do, would you like to make a motion?
Excuse me, uh, to to take action, um, the board would have to um make a motion to approve your project. And I make a motion that we approve with all the changes, uh, the information, contact, uh, your timeline, um, the permitting of trees. So if we can get that um with all the changes, then I make a motion that we support the Department of Parks and Recreation with their pilot program.
Okay, so just to be clear, the changes that you're referring to is the type of trees permitting, right? Timeline, okay, but just to be clear for the minutes, um, those changes are the type of trees permitting and timeline? Timeline, okay. Contact information, irrigation, irrigation, okay. All right, very good. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor to support the Department of Recreation Parks and Rec, and, oh, hmm, uh, with their program. Let's see, just so I can get this correctly. Excuse me. Okay, uh, so the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board, there is a motion to support the Ma'ili Community Park Cooling Project uh proposed by Department of Parks and Recreation uh to include contact information, types of trees, permitting information, timeline, and irrigation. And irrigation, okay. So I have that motion on the floor. Do I have a second? A second, a second by Board Member Agustin. Uh, we'll go ahead and go for the vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Discussion?
Oh, sorry, for discussion. Go ahead.
Um, I just, uh, is is this, uh, I guess I don't understand the, uh, I understand the motion, but there's, there's so many open items. Is that something that needs to go to committee first, to discuss with committee, and come back to the board with those types of things resolved before we have support, uh, approval for a motion? Or um or adjusting or rescinding the motion and redoing another motion to support this, but that more information, uh, uh, the Parks and Recreation, uh, to follow up on a lot of, there's a lot of open-ended items. the follow-up on a lot of, there's a lot of open-ended items. That's my, that's my, that's my two thought on it, on it. I support it, I don't definitely want it, but I think there's just too many open items out there that need to be addressed further.
Uh, any further discussion? Go ahead, Board Member Myers.
I um, I did all what uh Board Member David is saying, I'm very confused by the motion. Um, because, I mean, they're gave us a presentation of what they're gonna do, I don't think they need our permission. But as far as all the other things that are on the ask, I think that needs to go into the committee and then, you know, send an email or ask the mayor's rep to, you know, hand that over to the department. So I think it's just too confusing, so I'm not gonna support, yeah, mahalo.
Okay, uh, any other discussion, board members? Okay, and if we do wanna make a proposal, we have to vote on this motion first, so Board Member Tector?
Um, because we've been backpedaling for years in many projects and um trying to expedite a lot of things, I already invited them to the committee meeting. And if we can start to understand and learn that we know what they're gonna do, we know what they need to do, and if we don't get the word out, we're gonna pass Christmas, New Years, and then still planning. I believe we have an idea and a concept that um with the proposal, even though there's empty um notations of, you know, not in their documentation, the longer we wait, it it's setting things back, so um I will support this, what I say.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion, we're gonna go ahead and take a vote? Okay, so I'm gonna repeat the motion again. So the motion is to uh support, motion made by um Board Member Tector is to support the Mailei Community Park Cooling Project uh proposed by Department of Parks and Recreation, um, pending contact information, tree type, timeline, uh and irrigation. Uh, there was a second by Board Member Augustine, so with that, we'll go ahead and take the vote, all those in favor say aye. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, so I'm gonna go down the the motion, just in the order that I have. Um, Member IO? Board Member Augustine?
Aye.
Tector?
Aye.
Myers?
No.
Chair of Court? Kia?
Aye.
We got two advices. And Member Corona?
No.
Okay, so the, the motion is passed with a vote of five ayes and two nays.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, we'll go ahead and get you a letter. And uh we will move on to our next agenda. And thank you ladies very much uh for proposing this, bringing this to our Moku and doing a great thing. So uh Board Member Tector will be in touch with you on our uh Parks Committee next month, okay? All right, so we are moving on to officials' monthly reports, uh, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead. Correct, yes, thank you, okay. Uh, okay, and then I apologize, Haime is not able to join us, so we're gonna go ahead and defer that until January. Uh, next up, we have Governor's Rep Gary Yamashiro, I think he's online. Gary, if you're online, can you unmute and give us your uh Governor's Report?
Good evening.
Okay. Oh, Kelson, yes, oh, I apologize, thank you so much for joining us, Kelson.
No problem, uh, I I believe we emailed our report earlier this week. Um, uh, other than that, I have nothing else to report, um, but I'm open for any questions, I can take back to the Governor's Office.
Okay, very good, uh, anybody questions for Mayor's, uh, excuse me, Governor's Rep? Members, no que- community questions, anyone online? All right, very good, okay, Kelson, thank you, so, uh, well, hold on, uh, uh, Board Member Tector, question for Governor's Rep?
Hi, um, Mapuana Tector, I, I'm very concerned about housing for our people basically on Maui, because there's a lot of uh construction that can happen. There's a lot of, um, you know, also vacant places. I'm not sure how they, um, by our housing department. So it's sad that we're gonna have to go through the holidays and they're displaced. So to the governor, if you may ask him, what actions have he taken to expedite housing? Or are those people that was affected by the fire going to lose their place entirely and stay displaced? So we have a lot of companies, local companies, construction companies that I'm pretty sure they could get homes up for these people really fast. So please ask him, thank you.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you very much for being with us, Kelson. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to uh Mayor's Rep, uh Erwin, um, please go ahead and go up to the microphone, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Madam Chair, uh, good evening, uh, Board Members, everyone in the audience. Uh, Erwin Koata with Board of Water Supply for the Mayor's Report, I've submitted a report um beyond what's in that report, I don't have anything new. I've also submitted, uh, with your permission, Madam Chair, I've submitted the Board of Water Supply report also. And there's nothing new, um, do I have to report on that one either, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, Board Members, questions, uh, Board Member Myers, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, aloha. Um, back in January, there was a news report about uh property off of Hakemo Road. And, oh my gosh, I can't believe I forgot the name of that road, but I'll email it to you. And there was one thousand, over one thousand tires. A property owner had moved, her name is Sabrina Grace, and she had moved it off of her property and put it onto the sides of the road. So she admitted guilt of doing that, I guess neighbors had reported it. And so back then, Senator Vavella was saying to the mayor and to, that he should go give a waiver or have Department of Environmental Services waive a hundred thousand dollar fee to have those things go to a landfill and then she doesn't have to pay that. Um, so I wanted to know, what is the current status? Did the mayor waive it, which I don't think you should do that with our tax dollars, she should pay the the fine um or have it removed. And so what did, what what is the current status, because I saw that it's still on the side of the streets.
Okay, I'll find out, I'll find out.
Thank you, I appreciate it, we'll see you in January.
Yeah, see you in January, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, very good, any other question, Board of, um, Board Member Sten?
I see here you have a million-dollar grant for our Anahu, and I'm wondering if uh we can allocate any of those funds to the schools that are wanting to do beautification. I know Nanakuli High School is um, has interest in beautification where the boys locker room and lower campus is located. Um, due to vandalism, they're hoping to cover the area down there. And I I don't know how you guys would allocate money if they could select an artist, because they do have local artists in mind for that project.
Okay, I'll find out.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, question, Erwin, with regards, well, two question for Board of Water Supply. Number one, uh, Senator Awah was a part of stopping the leak, um, the water leak at Dillingham Airfield, which saved about a million gallons of water every month. Uh, so just wondering, wishful thinking that this might play into fact of uh reducing actually our water cost. Does that, does that factor in at all, being that uh he did save a million dol- a million gallons of water, does that help?
Um, yeah, that, uh, what Senator Awah did is is a good thing, it helps to protect a resource. That Dillingham Water System is a private water system, it doesn't, it's not connected to Board of Water Supply. So nevertheless, any kind of um reduction and stopping waste is is a good thing for the resource, so kudos to Senator for that.
Great, and then um, second question, uh, with regards to the project that uh DPR had just shared, um, possibly Board of Water Supply might be willing to uh donate water tanks, uh possibly to help us plant, uh water those trees, something down the line, just wanted to plant a seed in you. A thought, may not go anywhere, but just thought I'd drop that with you. Uh, community questions for Board of Water Supply, anyone online? Okay, we've got uh Melody, uh, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, Chair, aloha, Erwin.
Hello.
Uh, question, uh, Civil Beat today indicated that the Board of Water Supply filed a one-point-two-billion-dollar claim under the Federal Tort Claims Act, or I guess it was last month, according to this, it was filed. Uh, how does that uh balance with the increase of the water rates that is anticipated in the next five years? And also, how is that, uh, because federal court usually takes about two years before it gets any adjudication? So what does the Board of Water Supply intend to do? Uh, and plus the amount at one-point-two billion, that almost appears to be what was um provided to the neighborhood boards as to the overall uh capital projects uh that Board of Water Supply is anticipating in the next five years?
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you for that question, okay? So just overall, just as background, today, the board announced that we have filed a one-point-two-billion-dollar claim to the Navy for the recovery of costs in response to Red Hill. That one-point-two-billion dollars consists of monies that we have already spent to adjust our operations because of Red Hill and the cost of design and construct replacement water uh supplies. So as far as um that claim is concerned, the Navy has six months to act on that claim. If they take no action, we are free to go and sue them for that monies. But like in any kind of lawsuit, there's no guarantees that we will win. There was no guarantees as to any amount. In the meantime, we need to still operate and maintain our water system. And so that's what the rates are going to be for, because the majority of, yes, there's a certain portion that our water rates will cover Red Hill activities, but the rest of it has to do with increases in electricity, goods and services, all of those things that affect even you and I in terms of our day-to-day, also affects our operation. So that's what the rates are for. At the same time, we need to also ma- maintain our water system, we have to do the improvement. So over the next five years, we do have a capital improvement program that's designed to do that. Keep up with our water system, make the repairs we need to make, and over that five years is approximately a one-point-two-billion dollars. So you have two different um allocations or um monies being described here. Hope that answers the question, Melody?
Okay, very good. Uh, any other questions for Board of Water Supply? None, okay, uh, go ahead, please.
Just for the Mayor's Rep, um, Erwin, thank you so much. Um, on the, I wanted to clarify what Ms. Myers says, and the road is at the Kaokahi Road, Hakemo, on the over thousand, thousand um illegal tires that are located on both ends of that, that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, uh, very good, uh, no other questions for Board of Water Supply, I believe you're going into your Mayor's Rep Report.
Uh, yeah, I already did, I reported on my Mayor's Report.
I guess that, I apologize, uh, just really quick comment for the mayor, please tell him we said thank you very much for providing extra uh H P D for our Christmas on the app, that really helps uh to relieve a lot of the um financial um burden that it takes. So please thank him for that.
Thank you.
Uh, other than that, I think we are, um.
Oh, one more question, Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, uh, this is for Erwin, Board of Water Supply, uh, regarding the lawsuit. Uh, hypothetically, and we hope that you are successful. And in the event that that is the case, then will the Board of Water Supply reimburse the community for the increase in tax rate, I'm sorry, in uh water rates as a result of Red Hill?
Certainly, um, we are always looking for, if if the cost in goods and services over time gets less, then certainly any kinds of savings we get as a result of that, we'll certainly uh look at passing that on. But that has to be overall in terms of the cost of actually like electricity going down, the cost of gasoline going down, all those things going down. If as all of those things gets less, and if there are savings, and if it, and if the board sees it as being appropriate, then we can make those kinds of um uh extend those benefits back to our ratepayers. But that all, that's all has to do with economy.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, all right, Erwin, well, thank you very much, uh.
Holidays, everybody.
Yes, happy holidays, thank you so much, Erwin drives out here, every neighborhood board, he's so awesome, he's the first one to show up. We mahalo you, Erwin, thank you very much, thank you. Okay, next up, we have uh Congresswoman Jill Tokuda, if we have someone online. Okay, David, go ahead and unmute yourself, thank you for being with us.
Hi, good evening, Chair, uh, David Taga from Rep Tokuda's office. I believe that our our office shared with you our November community report, I hope that you received that. Um, in addition to that, we wanna thank, Rep Tokuda wants to thank everyone that joined her at the virtual town hall that she hosted last week, several hundred people uh joined her for that. Um, and other than the written report, I think I'll just, for those in attendance, maybe I'll just share a few words from her uh on her Thanksgiving message to everyone. Um, and Rep Tokuda says this, "With the Maui fires and unrest around the world in twenty-twenty-three, Thanksgiving will be a much-needed moment to reflect and give thanks. If there was ever a time to gather with loved ones, hold hands, and say mahalo for our blessings, this is the time. My heartfelt aloha to you and your families this Thanksgiving." From Rep Tokuda, thank you, Chair, I'll stand by for any comments you may have for our office.
Very good, thank you, David, uh, Board Members, any questions for Congresswoman? See none, any here in person, any online? No, none online, okay, very good, well, thank you for joining us, David, and please send our aloha to uh Congresswoman Jill Tokuda. Wish her happy holidays from us, thank you. All right, we are moving on, uh, Councilmember Andrea Tupola, we have uh Miko with us in person, if you could make your way to the microphone, thank you.
Hi, Board, um, so I gave you folks the packet with our newsletter and then a couple letters and then flyers. So the letters are just, um, letters that Councilmember had wrote to Chief Logan requesting additional police presence in the wake of a lot of um high crime that happened in the past couple months, so we asked him to do extra checkpoints and stuff like that, to which he, he did oblige, he has been doing it for, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but especially over Veterans Day weekend, um, they did do a handful of extra checkpoints, um, per our request. Um, so we just thanked him for that and then we invited him to our town hall. Um, the next one is a letter that we wrote to um Director Thielen from Parks and Rec, asking them to enforce park rules. Um, so this is something that Councilmember will be working on. An initiative that she'll be working on in the coming year, especially in response to the stabbing that happened across McDonald's. Um, that's an area that we've been asking for attention for a very long time. Um, so hopefully, it spurs something in the department to enforce the rules. Anyway, so that's the, that's the letter, if you guys have any questions, you can feel free to ask. And then the next two are just flyers that we have coming up, so we have the um Crime Town Hall as a follow-up to the one that we did in May, that'll be on December fifth. Um, Mayor and my M D, my forty-four. Mayor and my MD, my 40, Form B will also be in attendance, as well as Deputy Tom Brady from the prosecutor's office. That's not posted on the flyer. And then the next one is our Angel Tree flyer that we'll be doing. This is the third or fourth time we've been doing Angel Tree. The last year, we provided Christmas gifts to like 300 kids, I think, with the help of the community and other donations that we received. So this year, we're doing 250, I think. That's the final count. Hopefully, there's no more. 300 is a lot. 250 is kind of a lot. So if you'd like to be an angel this year, please let me know. We need it. But yeah, that's our report, and I'm open to any questions.
Very good. Board Member Myers and Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Can you please express to Councilmember Tupola that I appreciate that she joined forces with other community leaders and made a statement about those signages that were outside of Honolulu Halei with pictures and, you know, statements making, making statements about corruption, et cetera. Because I want our community to understand how I feel about those things. If you have something incriminating, then take it to the courts. You know, call the police, make a legitimate police report, and go and take care of it in the criminal justice system. If you have real evidence. But don't go around and putting up signs of people's faces and saying these, making these derogatory statements. You know, I don't appreciate that as a, as a citizen, saying that about our mayor and our councilwoman, and then going on the news and saying that you're not associated with it. Because as far as I'm concerned, when you see it, if you're, if you're an elected official, you should either ask them to put it down, take care of it in the courthouse, or in the criminal justice system, whatever you have against that person. Or just, you know, or go and move some, to another place. Because as far as I'm concerned, we're trying to get a strong message about, we don't want people to, you know, be having guns, et cetera, et cetera. That's serious. The kids are hurting each other. So as adults, we shouldn't be mixing messages. I mean, it's real. They're using firearms. That needs to be a serious message. And there are community leaders and community people that are coming out and saying that that's wrong. But I don't appreciate when people now get dirty politics and not coming up with real evidence and taking it through the justice system. For me, if I have something that is real, I either confront the person in person and work through it, find out why they did that or something. But I don't appreciate letting our next generation know, just hold up the signs and say that you're incompetent or whatever, like what I saw out there on the signages. So I just want to applaud her and those other leaders that said no to that. You know, because we need to stand in arms for what is really true happening in our community. So I just wanted to mahalo her. I know it might be painful, you know, when people are giving mixed messages, but I just wanted her to know that I stand in support. Mahalo.
Thank you, Board Member Myers. Board Member Corona?
Yeah, just, just briefly. A lot of times what I do is I'm on distributions from the city and county, and I see all the resolutions or the bills that are being advertised for discussion, et cetera. And a lot of times, I'll take a look at the resolution or I'll read it, and I'll have additional questions that I want to ask the council member. And mainly, it's because I want to bring it to the board when we have our board meetings, so I can address it within the board and the community can hear my questions. So the community can understand there's something happening at Honolulu Halei with the council. But sometimes I have a hard time getting through. So is, can you help me out, maybe offline or, or something to where I can have a more direct, not directly with her directly, but with the staff to help me answer those questions so I can help with the board or with the community when, when it does come up?
Yeah, of course.
Great, thank you.
Okay, very good. Board members, any other questions? I have two questions. First one, Bill 58 and Bill 59. I understand it got rescheduled. The zoning meeting had gotten canceled. Can you just keep us posted with when that testimony is going to be happening? And then I had gotten in touch with Councilmember Tupola with regards to Black Rock Cattle Gate. So if she could maybe touch bases with me?
Black Rock what?
The cattle gate at Black Rock? Yeah, 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 Black Rock. There were some community members that were wanting to follow up on having secured. And then also, let's see. Oh, and I just want to confirm, December? I'm sorry. This has to be heard. So Chief Logan, I don't, I don't think I heard you say his name.
He has yet to confirm.
He has what?
Yet to confirm.
Oh, okay.
He has been invited, though.
Oh, yes, yes, we need him there. Okay, all right. Well, hmm, he needs to be there. Okay. Uh, no, no. So last time, last town hall...
The mayor will be there. Mayor with Managing Director Form B will be there.
Yeah, but yeah, not Chief Logan. Okay, yeah, we need him there.
I will follow up with his office.
Yes, please highly encourage him to attend. He's the decision maker. We need decisions to be made on more police presence down here and everything. I know that I'm preaching to the choir here, but it's, it's, it's absolutely urgent that Chief Logan be there. Yes, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Board Member IO?
I know Major Mike Lambert's gonna be there because probably gonna be his representative. Uh, the chief, huh? And I get this because the chief, other than us here on the West Side, there's just much crime in the city of Honolulu that baffles me more than the crime right here in Waianae. Waianae, we got shootings. Downtown Honolulu, they got robberies, they got homicides, they got rapes, and they got burglaries. We don't have all of that. We just got shootings and stabbings. That's all we got on the West Side. So if the chief can make it, fine. But his representative, Major Mike Lambert, is a very good representative. Really super nice guy, and he's very knowledgeable, very, very knowledgeable. Let's just want to pump up the HPD guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to support Board Member IO's statement, the crime on the West Side has increased 80% in homicides. So we have increased the most here in Honolulu County. So thank you very much. Please thank Mike Lambert, Major Mike Lambert, for making it a priority to bring extra patrol down here and to really crack down on the warrants. And I believe it was 800 citations that they gave the other weekend. So please get word to him that we really appreciate him. All right, very good. Thank you very much, everybody. Online questions for Councilmember Tupola? Okay, seeing none, awesome. Thank you so much, Mika. You're so great, awesome. Okay, very good. So we are moving on. Senator Miley Shimabukuro. I believe we have Senator online? Patrice, Patrice. Hi, Patrice. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. Oh, no, you, you muted yourself again.
Now? Okay. Hi, I just shared our neighbor, I'm sorry, our newsletter for this month. Senator wanted us to share that district legislators and also councilmember Tupola, they, on October 30th, they conducted a community meeting to discuss the chronic and recent issues in our community, which includes the shootings, threats, illegal game rooms, and houselessness. In attendance was Chief Logan, AG Lopez, Mayor Blangiardi, Managing Director Form B, Prosecutor Steve Alm, Delenard Doakere, and the sheriffs in HPD. So they're well aware with everything, all the other people that are bringing these issues to their attention. So hopefully, we have a follow-up meeting for that. And other than that, in my new, in our newsletter, I shared a lot of the crossover bills for next session, if anybody has any concerns about that. If not, I'll take any questions if anybody has them.
Okay, very good. Board Member, any questions? Board Member Myers, or Corona, go ahead.
Mahalo, thank you, Chair. Mahalo for the report. I'm so glad that they're collaborating and trying to get, come up with some solutions. Mahalo, mahalo. I saw in the newsletter that, from Keahe, that there was some new legislations considered for 2024. Can you find out what is it that she's going to present regarding recycling construction waste using international codes? And then demolition recycling standards for state procurement bidding? It's right below that. It's all on page, I think it was page three at the bottom. And so I'm going from left to right. And then I also wanted to know about Department of Health beach brown water sampling and regular ongoing monitoring? That one I was really curious about. And then there was one more. Oh, the Create Hawaii State Fire Prevention Bureau. And there was, oh, yes. Create Waianae Moku Access to Education, ATE Program. Is that something to do with the DOE? Or I'm just curious about, about that as well. Those, that's it that I have for my questions.
Okay, I'll follow up with that and maybe email the board and have it ready for next, I guess the next meeting is in January?
Yes, yes. Enjoy your holidays.
You too, you guys, all of you guys. Happy holidays.
Board, thank you. Board Member Corona and then Board Member Tektar.
Patrice, how you doing?
Hi.
So just a couple of things. In the newsletter, I, I, I did see where she mentioned about the meeting that at the, about the crime, about at the, at the station. And what she said in there was that they came up with concrete and tangible solutions. So what are the concrete and tangible solutions? And so you might not have the answers right now, but she's coming up for her town hall on, on the 28th at the high school. So maybe at that time, she can provide some kind of feedback on that?
I'm sorry, it is only going to be Rep. Keela's town hall on December, or wait, is it November 28th or?
November 28th.
Yes, and then perhaps it's going to be working on a town hall on December 13th with, it's going to be Senator for sure, Rep. Gates, and we're going to see if Rep. Keela can also join them. It'll be December 13th at Aina Cafe. I believe 6:00 PM. But I can also try to see if I can get a follow-up. I'll be at that November 28th Rep. Keela's town hall. So I'll try to get a report back by then.
Okay, if not, you said December 13th at the cafe at 6:00 PM, you said?
I believe at 6:00 PM, but I'll email you if I, if it's changed, yeah.
Yeah, and then one more thing for the Senator. So Rep. Keela's been doing a great job with one of the concerns that was brought up a couple months ago about high school safety or safety in the schools. And so he's been doing a lot of follow-up on that. So he sent some correspondence back out today with some good information how in the state senate, I think, starting back from 2017, they've had resolutions and, and bills that have gone up. But all of them were...
Tossed away, forgotten about.
Had a chance to really read all of them yet, but it was dealing with school safety, resource officers, et cetera. And it seemed like the senate, all of it was always no, except for one time, that the resolution was supported, but then the next year it was not supported. So if we're having resource issues, problems at our schools or wanting more safety, and the senate has been seeing this and continually not approving it, or for some reason, can she expand on that, on what her thoughts are about that? And I'll probably engage with her again on December 13th, when I ask that question on December 30th, if I don't hear back before then, but just for something for her regard. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Very good. Board members, I apologize, Board.
Hi, my question to Shimabukuro, Senator Shimabukuro is, in September, I asked a question in regards to the harbor as far as the repairs, when the ships dock or offload, they have to empty their boats out. And I'm not sure if they repaired it. There was no follow-up. And because each boat has to pay. They have to, no matter what, whether it works or not, they have to pay. So that's not a good thing that it's been non-operational on the harbor's part. So why should they give the money and nothing, you know, is done?
Right. Also, your concern is that they're not able to, right? They pay, but they're not able to offload and everything? Is that?
Right, yes.
Got it, I'll, I'll follow up on that. Okay. Thank you for your concern.
Very good. Community members, any questions for the Senator? None online? Okay, we will be moving on. Patrice, it's always so nice to have you join us. Please give our aloha to Senator Shimabukuro. And we will see you, oh, all right. But we'll see you before then, Christmas on the Ave.
Yes, take care. Happy holidays, everybody.
Okay, Representative Keela? Representative online? No, none, okay. He did send his newsletter, so I did email that over to you folks. And we'll move over to Army Representative. Yes? Go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Thank you. We received a response from Rep. Keela regarding education and specifically regarding to the safety measures in schools, school resource officers or other school security personnel. Is there any way that, I, I understand that we need to have it agendized, but legislature is coming up in January, and so they need to introduce bills. So I'm wondering how our, our board can make a strong statement that public safety is important, but at our schools, that's another level. Because when the child passes away from being injured, from being killed, or, or a multitude of children, we can't, we can't rewind. So you know, I watch on the news report about things that are happening in the mainland. You know, I don't want that to happen to our parents down here. So trying to be proactive. I understand funding is always an issue. And I see in here that, you know, 2023, 2022, I'm surprised that our legislatures are not passing these bills. But, so I'm just wondering how us as a board can make a strong statement that, you know, we want our elected officials to make our schools safe for our children, especially on the Waianae side. You know, I mean, maybe we can't do it statewide, but can we find funding to do it? Maybe start with a study or something. But at least start on the West Side and, and recover our side. And if the other moku's want to take care of that in their side. So maybe, I mean, I know that it needs to be agendized, so maybe in January? Yeah?
So maybe we can have this presented at our education committee as well. And so we can carry the discussion further before, in our education committee. And then, yeah, we can definitely take a stand on it. I, I, I would be highlighting this at the town hall just to encourage him to bring this up to our committee and our board again, so we can support it.
Okay, mahalo.
Awesome, all right, very good. Okay, and we are moving on. Oh, I apologize, Army. Please come up to the microphone. Thank you again so much for joining us.
Aloha, Madam Chair, Board members. Before I get started with the announcement, I just want to personally thank Board Member Myers for participating in the Koli Koli Pass Familiarization Tour we took last month. Hopefully, they answered a lot of the community's questions and you can share with the community. I know I learned a lot from that tour. So first thing is JP RC. That was the big training exercise that happened this month. So we completed that. We just wanted to, it was an immensely important training readiness exercise. And we just wanted to make sure we understand how much of a strain that puts on the community with all the extra events and traffic. Um, so we want to thank you for your support and sacrifice over the, the past two weeks. Um, and we remain honored to work with Hawaiian and be part of this community. Second thing is the wildfires. So there's a lot of wildfires that happened in Milani. So our Combat Aviation Brigade supported those wildfires with bucket drops from October 30th to November 3rd. This was also during the JPMRC exercise, so it was even more aircraft in the air than we were expecting. So a lot of noise and activity from the aircraft. Overall, um, the Army efforts resulted in 90 hours of flight time, 300 buckets of waters dropped totaling 350,000 gallons for that wildfire. Third note is the November Job Fair. I mentioned this last month, but it's happening on November 28th at the airport Honolulu Hotel beginning at 8:30, and that event is open to the public. And finally, the last note I have is, uh, just a reminder that the 25th Infantry Division will be participating in the Waiki Ki holiday parade on November 24th. We'll have soldiers there marching and then also the, the division band will be performing for that event. Pending any questions for the community, that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Uh, board member, any questions? Board member Corona?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, Big Island Fire. Did that, uh, get resolved and, uh?
I, I believe so. I hadn't, I didn't see anything in the community notes. Normally we get feedback on that, so I think that's all resolved. We participated over there as well, but I haven't heard anything about it in the past month, so I can follow up and find out.
Cause it was, uh, burning, what, a couple of weeks ago or a week ago or something like that? So, and then it flared back up again. We had the heavy winds. But I assume that it's, uh, been resolved. Just wanted to, you know, ask about that.
Yeah, I could, I could double check. I hadn't heard anything about that. We were over there for training. We trained on both islands. Normally the community calls us in if they can't handle it locally, so I'll double check. I hadn't heard anything about that.
Thought it was actually on your training site, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, the PTA site. Yeah, I'll double check.
Okay, very good. Board member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Mahalo for the tour and I want to share with the community that it, uh, and, and most especially Victor, that, yeah, it can't be used for the public. You know, only when you go and see the tour.
Be used during the.
You can't go, uh, yeah, no can be used for the public. So it, it's not something that we can use, you know, to evacuate in a serious manner. But definitely I'm excited about the MOU being updated. And, um, I, I am confident that Councilmember Topola can work with you all. Um, I was grateful to see all the leaders from, uh, different, uh, installations, you know, the Heima, Hiko, et cetera, that came out to the meeting, um, in order to give their mana'o about how the MOU can be updated. So that most importantly, when we need emergency vehicles on the west side, it, they can use Koli Koli Pass to come and service us, you know? So that is such a critical, critical thing, especially if Farintin's gonna be, um, you know, blocked in some way or form. Um, our board member Mapuana had made these things from, for, on behalf of our board, um, to wish you, uh, happy veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving us. And, and for me too, for thanking you and Merry Christmas, okay? Can I give you this?
Yes.
Yes, we appreciate our Army. Thank you so much for all the sacrifice you make. Of course, absolutely. Thank you so much. Awesome, that was so nice. Thank you very much. Board member Tektar, Board member Myers. Uh, no other questions, seeing none online. Thank you so much. Lieutenant Colonel, we appreciate you. Uh, thank you for being with us. And then now we're gonna move on to Navy. I believe we have Danny in person. Oh, it's been a, it's been a while since he's been with us in person, visiting us.
Uh, thank you all for having me here, Chair. Um, yeah, I think I've gotten a little taller since, uh, um, so I'll, uh, jump right into this. Um, have update from the, uh, Joint Task Force at Red Hill. Um, as of the 17th of November, so last week, uh, the Joint Task Force reported that they removed 103 million, more than 133 million gallons of fuel from, uh, Red Hill. Um, and that's out of 104 million that they, uh, said were in there. Uh, so basically that's 99.5% of it has been removed. Uh, now at this point, they're, um, waiting for the regulators to approve, um, removing the, uh, lower part of the tanks. Um, so that they can, uh, complete it. Uh, they'll begin that, um, they expect around, uh, the 4th of, uh, December. So, um, that's, um, some good news as far as the progress of, uh, removing the, the fuel. Um, also I wanted to, uh, mention this evening that, um, uh, the, uh, drinking water long-term monitoring program, uh, they're still doing that. They're still having the information booth to help, uh, explain to the community how to read their drinking, uh, water report. Um, the next information booth will be on November 30th at the Navy Exchange. And, uh, that'll be, um, a good opportunity to learn more about, uh, the testing methods. And if people who are on the Navy water line, um, request that their, um, water be tested, they can, um, re- request it at that place. Um, and with that, uh, you all have our, our full report. Um, I will pass it on to, uh, Uncle Vic here to give the rest of the report. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, board member.
Questions?
Yep, Board Member Corona and then Board Member Myers. Uh, Board, no, Board Member Tektar and Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I was talking to Irwin about this earlier today, um, before the, um, the meeting started was that 5 million gallons a day, is that real, and that's released, um, into the Halava Stream? And then, um, I understood, I heard that they were gonna look into maybe reduce that. But is that a consistent 24/7, non-stop flow of, of water, uh, being discharged into the lava? For a couple of months now, I think, at least, or longer. But, so I guess my, 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 my question is this, is, uh, I'm so, so big on water, uh, and that is so much water that's just being thrown away. Uh, and so that, that's my biggest concern right now is, it's just, it's just un- water that's been taking millions of years or years and years and years to, to be in aquifers or being in the groundwater. And now it's just being sent away like it's nothing and never get it back now. So how long, much longer is that gonna happen? How much longer do, are you gonna, as an aide, you gonna be releasing all those, that water into lava stream? Uh, can you, maybe if, if you can't answer that, at least by January, come back and have some good feedback, good data on that? Cause I, I'm just concerned about that. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you, um, for, for that question. Um, yes, so that water, um, so the Navy's no longer pulling water from the, um, halava wells there. They're, they're no longer using it for drinking water. Um, but what they've been tasked to do by the, um, regulators is to still draw that water, send it through this, uh, the GAK filtration system. So they're still filtering it out. But the regulators are having them, um, pour out the water into the stream. So it's already been filtered, but it's still being done. The Navy's made some proposals to, uh, Department of Health, um, about the, uh, water. Uh, but, um, as of right now, regulators still are requiring the Navy to do that.
Okay, and then I'm sorry, uh, when you mentioned that just right there, Department of Health, State Department of Health?
Yes.
So they made proposals to the State Department of Health on, uh, all, other alternatives with, for the water that's being discharged and the State Department of Health has not acted on it or has not agreed to it?
Uh, the Department of Health wants the Navy to continue to do what it's been doing for the last, uh, uh, over a year.
Well, state's been since then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, is there any possibility that there could be a demonstration on the water and, you know, we, we, oil and water do not mix. And I understand that, just for clarity purpose, for a lot of people that may not understand that whole process, cause that's a lot of fuel that got wasted, a lot of water that got wasted, manpower. And defueling that, in the long run, y- y- you have to dry it out anyways, but when you submerge any form of pumping, it pumps the water out, but the oil, so there's a lot of gray areas in trying to explain to the public. So if Department of Water created a lawsuit, then the public has the same right too. Um, but I believe a demonstration might suffice. So is it possible?
Um.
Was it even in the making?
Yeah, I, um, so I think there were, I think there are a couple of things. Um, yeah, I, I agree. Uh, demonstration will better help everyone understand what's, um, what's happening. Um, but there are a couple of, couple of issues that you were, uh, bringing up. Um, the, what they're doing with the water now is separate than what was going on with the, um, the, the incident, you know, a couple of years ago. Um, and then the lawsuit is, is kind of separate from that as well. Everything is all related to, to, you know, the events, but they're, they're separate things. So the Department of Health, from what I understand, they just want to be 100% sure that everything's okay. So that's why they're requiring that the water is, is, that's drawn out from that halava shaft is filtered. And, but they still don't want, as of right now, they don't want that water to be used for anything. Um, I think the tests were out of months and months of drawing from it. There was like less than a, a teaspoon of any kind of fuel even found. Um, so even though there's really, they're, they're drawing water and it's, it's basically decent water. Um, as of right now, Department of Health is still ordering the Navy to, to pour it out. Um, so that's one point. Um, and then I, I'm not sure about the other part of the demonstration that, um, that, that the, um, board member was looking for.
I think maybe Victor might be able to add to that response. Um, but thank you very much, Danny. Uh, we'll have, uh, Victor come up now? Thank you, Danny. Thank you so much.
Aloha, Victor Flynn, Naval Facilities. Just to touch on that, and these guys are the, this is their thing. But this is, and this is public. I get the Navy water quality report. And I can show it to you guys and can also go online and see all the stuff going on with the water. Good, bad, ugly, everything. And, um, it's kind of colorful and it's not a hard read, but it brings up all the stuff that Danny has been saying. And the, uh, and the amounts found, part per billion or something like that. Anyway, let your eyes, you own eyes can look at this thing and you can look it up. Uh, he gave the website plenty times, the Safe Waters website, yeah, Danny. But I'll show it to you guys later. Oh, also, where's these 5 million gallons come from? That's what the, uh, Department of Land and Natural Resources who own the water, that's what they order us. You will push 5 million a day and has to go through the filters. And one of the reasons, when it goes in that stream, we don't want to overload the halava stream with all of this fresh water. So the scientists and biologists and engineers all figured that out. And they say, hey, 5 million, we go, okay. Put it through those filters, okay? They are the regulators. They regulate us. They dictate to us what we have to do, something like that. So I want to get on with my, with my report. Okay, this is great. Nagaoka Oginia Elementary School students visit Pearl Harbor, visited Pearl Harbor October 25th. Nagaoka is the hon- the sister city of Honolulu. So the kids came and we rode out the red carpet, showed them all the sights. Also, November 18th, the Navy co-hosted the annual Makahiki down at Pearl Harbor. And we partnered with the Owahu Council of Hawaiian Civic Clubs and the Native Hawaiian Societies to put this, uh, event on. It was, um, the event happened, uh, adjacent to the A-Freem. You know Restaurant 604? That's where it was. So, mai ka'i, good fun, plenty of people, and it was all on TV. Uh, November 27th, Aia High School students are visiting Pearl Harbor. And on November 29th, Aia Kupuna are visiting Pearl Harbor. And both of them are going to look at Pearl Harbor and go back in time. We're gonna put them on a boat so they can see Pearl Harbor from a different point of view and look at all the sights and hear the moolele. Uh, December 7th coming up, uh, 7:30 AM, December 7th, the Navy will co-host the 82nd Annual December, December 7th Ceremony. It'll take place at the, uh, Pearl Harbor National Memorial Visitor Center. And, um, Navy, National Park Service, other federal, state and city reps will commemorate that horrible day of infamy. 1,177 men perished aboard the Arizona when the ship was attacked. Another thousand plus died to include many of our emergency responders. We praise and honor and reverence the sacrifices our brave men and women made on December 7th, 1941. And Brother Jason, mahalo so much on October 23rd for your hua ka'i. That is the best way to judge that Koli Koli Pass. Your eye don't lie. And I really appreciate the effort, mahalo. And, um, as of today, Koli Koli Pass remains open and clear in case it needs to be used for emergency leeward access and egress. Hope that doesn't happen. Are there any questions for me or any more questions for Brother Danny?
Board members, any questions, uh, for Navy, seeing none, none online? Oh, uh, go ahead, Melody, please unmute.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. Aloha, Victor, this is Melody. Question, Pearl Harbor Day, will there be a Pearl Harbor parade?
Please repeat your question.
Okay, thank you. Will there be a Pearl Harbor parade to commemorate Pearl Harbor Day?
Was she?
Will there be a Pearl Harbor parade?
You know?
No?
Aloha, um, Melody, um,
Aloha.
Chair, I, I think the, um, the, um, the Navy's working with the National Park Service, so they're the, the lead on it. But, uh, if I find out that they're gonna have a parade, then I'll, uh, I'll reach out to you, Chair, and, and let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Very good. All right, well, before you go, uh, we want to honor you and recognize, uh, you on behalf of Veterans Day as well. We appreciate you. Thank you so much. No, we did not forget the Navy. But thank you, Uncle Vic, Danny, we appreciate you. Yes, yes. Thank you so much for your hard work and sacrifice. Thank you very much, Board Member Tektar. Okay, very good. Um, and, uh, we are moving on to board business. All right, very good. Uh, first on our agenda for board business is Nanakuli Maili Neighborhood Board Number 36 to participate in the 2023 Holiday Tree Display at Kapole Hale. Board members, I did send you the, uh, information on what that requires. Uh, so, uh, we can go ahead and, um, uh, can go ahead and, and have discussion on it? Yep, board member, uh, any questions, board members? Okay, Board Member Myers and, nope, okay.
So I, I read the email regarding the instructions. So first of all, are we going to do it and are we gonna do it as a team? And then are we gonna have a theme, like a theme? And then I'm hoping that, you know, maybe black and gold for Nanakuli or maybe educational, I don't know. But I, I love Christmas and I love Christmas with the nativity scene to give the understanding that it's Jesus is the reason for the season. But at the same time, I'm open to whatever ideas and whatever everyone else is sharing.
Yeah, that is the idea, all of us to participate. I, uh, yes, so, uh, we can go ahead and share our ideas, our thoughts. Uh, thank you, Board Member Myers. Uh, did anybody else have any suggestions?
Well, that was, uh, the, the flyer, basically said we had to provide our own tree and decorations.
That's correct.
Right, so if, if that were the case, we'd look, be looking for someone to donate a tree or the board has a budget that they would buy a tree, um, and then look for donations of decorations or lighting, et cetera, so. So some things to maybe consider uh, in this, but uh, so I, I'm just trying to regurgitate a little bit from what uh, what the memo was, I don't.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I would be willing to donate uh, a tree. It's, it's an artificial tree. But it comes pre-licked, uh, and uh, I believe it's uh, seven and a half feet. Um, so that's what I would be willing to, you know, if somebody wants to be a part of the decoration committee, I'm more than happy to support that person in that. Um, but my contribution will be the tree, okay? Uh, anybody else would like to contribute their tax? Uh, please, now is the time to share that.
I have an idea. PCNC, uh, Sharlita Mahoy, Raffeta High School. Maybe, you know, they can, it says on the thing, culture, history, and recreational?
Correct, the, the theme side of Wonderland.
Yes, so with Sharlita them doing, I know that that's their week, but I mean, December 4th to December 7th is the, I guess maybe, I don't know, can we do it by email as far as our ideas and stuff? But I mean, is it a commitment? We're gonna go decorate between the 4th and the 7th, between 8:00 and 4:30? That's the installation day.
Yeah, so we definitely have to vote on it, uh, if that's what we're gonna be supporting. And then I guess the collaborating part can be through email, I guess, yeah?
I think the email one would be great, because we've got some time before the end of the month.
For sure, for sure.
But I love it. It looks, it looks like fun.
I know, I'm excited, very much.
So it, so is there, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Board Member. Don't kill our buzz, okay? We're excited about this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so is there, I'm trying to remember the memo, uh, because I did read it, I'm just trying to remember everything about it. But um, if we had a tree, is there a uh, a placard or something that says uh, Nanakuli Maili Neighborhood, or is, is, is it something we had to provide? Or is that something that's already there for us?
Yeah, so we'll be taking full responsibility of the decor.
Of everything, including a plaque or something that says?
I, I don't think that there's going to be a plaque.
It's just, it's just a tree.
Uh, correct, um, but we can put that, Nanakuli Neighborhood Board.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious.
Neighborhood Board, but, but I will get clarification on that. Because that is a good question. How would they identify the other trees?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get clarity on that. Thank you for asking. Good question.
Can we use the part of the $1,000 since this is an outreach in order to purchase the artificial tree and then decorate it? Is, I mean, can we use some of that money or not?
I don't want to give you a definitive answer. Um, it was talked about amongst the NCO. I'll clarify that first thing and I'll send out an email tomorrow. For the, um, if that can be, if that money can be allocated to this event. Yes, that's, that's the entirety of the board's budget. If some of it can go to this event, I'm not entirely too sure. But I will clarify that and send an email out first thing to the board.
Okay, Board Member Augustine?
I think this is a wonderful idea, um, and it just shows camaraderie with our board, uh, supporting the holidays. And also um, Kapole Halei, uh, showing the community that we're active, working together. Uh, decorations, everyone has Christmas decorations on hand, so I don't recommend we use the board funds for this because um, I, I really want that money to be allocated to something more representative of the community, uh, not necessarily of our board. So if we can all collaborate together by bringing a theme together and donating something that we have, I think we could pull this off. So thank you for the recommendation.
Okay, we do have on our agenda to discuss uh, the $1,000 for community outreach. So we'll have more discussion on that. Uh, but I think for go ahead and uh, see if the board is in support of participating in the 2023 Holiday Tree Display at Kapole Halei. And coordinate the, how we're going to facilitate that decorate it through email. Yeah? So I think uh, somebody's have to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to uh, have a tree display at Kapole Halei from the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board. Okay, great. Do we have a second? All right, very good. Uh, okay, let's go ahead and, uh, we'll, I Okay, I think it's safe to say that we can do, um, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nee. Any abstentions? Okay, passes. We are going to be a part of the 2023 Holiday Tree Display at Kapole Halei. Oh, it's going to be so exciting. Oh, I'm looking forward to it. Oh, good, good, good. Okay, great, great. Okay, uh, next on our agenda is the $1,000 for community outreach. So I'm going to go ahead and give it over to Jeffrey and he can explain a little bit more on what that is, entails. Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I know at the last, last month's meeting, it was, there were some questions brought up regarding the $1,000 budget. So, and we, this was discussed in the Conference of Chairs. Um, the $1,000 is solely for community outreach. So for example, if um, an organization wants to come through the board, or if you guys um, know other organization and would, the board would like to be a part of whatever it is, say it's a beach cleanup, then that $1,000 could be used in allocating for like materials, for supplies and things of that nature. Um, but of course, community outreach isn't only pertaining to beach cleanups. But it is solely for something that the board would like to support that is in the realm of community outreach, which beach cleanup. Um, I know that the um, a high school beautification was something that was brought up. If that's something that, you know, you, that you guys could classify and find a way to classify that as a community outreach, it would like to support that type of a thing, that's where the $1,000 could go to. But as far as, I know that it was brought up at last month's meeting, it was um, there are things like paying the library for the facility or for refreshments at um, committee meetings that, that isn't classified under the umbrella of community outreach, even though it is community involved. Um, but yes, that $1,000 is solely for any type of community outreach events that you guys would like to participate in. In the event it's due the end of the year, um, it is recommended that you, of course, email Chair and CC myself, since I'm the Neighborhood Assistant for the Board. That way we can go through the necessary um, steps in getting it approved and going through the, the process of getting the budget for whatever it is or whatever you guys would like to set forward for the, for the community outreach. Say for example, it's, we would like to put forth $100, that we can make sure $100 specifically comes out of the budget. More so than we would like to support, whatever comes out, comes out, and that's, and that's it. So as far as coordination is concerned, please make sure it's done that way. And open to any questions if there are any follow-ups.
Members, first question, Board Member, uh, Member Corona and then Myers.
Yeah, just one brief question. Um, so the, the, the allocation um, of, of the, of the money, um, just hypothetically, the board wants to do a project of something for community outreach. Um, and then uh, does the board have to say, okay, let's put together some refreshments or something, or supplies for something? Um, and is the board have to vote on that dollar amount, approved by the board, dollar amount? And then NCO releases the funding, or is, or is the NCO have to go back and say, okay, the board's requesting it, okay, now we have to discuss and whether or not we're going to approve the allocation or the, the, the releasing of the funds, or is it automatically just going to happen once we agree to it?
That's a great question. Um, so as far as the NCO deciding whether or not to disperse it, that's, that is ultimately the decision of the board to want to participate in a community outreach in some way, shape, or form. All, what would, the process would be is you guys would notify us, we would like to participate in this. We would like to use part of our $1,000 um, community outreach budget to support this, whatever it may be. If there's a specific amount, as long as you guys let us know and kind of give us the realm of what supplies are going to be used, then of course, um, we'd go about it that way. For example, if you were to say, we want to support this, we want to use the $1,000 in our budget and kind of just keep it general, that would kind of um, provide an instance where it's a little more red tape. Because keeping it general can mean like you guys could be using the money for other things. And of course, that's just situational. But say for example, beach cleanup, you guys would like $100 to get supplies, bags, gloves, things of that nature. Then all you guys would have to do is contact NCO, we're interested, and we'll go through the paperwork on our end, or paperwork on our end, and go through the process to get that approved for whatever outreach it is. Does that answer your questions?
It does, and it goes directly to the treasurer at that time? It goes, the, 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 the dollar amount would go directly to the treasurer and the treasurer now have control of the dollars?
Yes, and in the event that the, in the event that the treasurer is not present or unable to attend, then the board would have to agree on somebody who would be in charge of the funds. So in the event that the treasurer's not present and you guys, say for example, elect uh, yourself, Member Corona, that you're going to be the one responsible, then you would be the point of contact for us for that specific outreach event.
Board Member Myers?
So my question is, so in doing outreach, it's for the neighborhood board, right, us? Okay, I know when we went to the installation, they were talking about, oh, they're going to see if they can find money to buy us shirts. And then never came back about that. So if we're gonna do an outreach, I would hope that we can all look uniform with shirts so that people can see that, you know, we're, we're, we're doing an outreach as a neighborhood board. So you know, neighborhood board number 36, et cetera. Um, so the shirts, if the, the neighborhood board is not going to pay for shirts for all of, you know, I would, I would hope we could do that. Um, then so for example, if we wanted to go hold signs to make a message that, you know, like say for example, when we take a motion that we're against gun violence, can we use the money to buy banners or signs? And then of course, we, if we all had our shirts, then we're doing it uniform as far as that. So I have that. And then this is, I know in the, I participated in the neighborhood board system since 2012. Um, they used to have a, during election year, the neighborhood board number 36 used to do a um, a candidate forum. So I wanted to know if that is also paid, like say, okay, pay for the place, like the library, some refreshments. If that is also, and then, you know, we, we inviting the, the elected officials and maybe, you know, can I pay for like, um, somebody to come and videotape it so that to get the messaging out? Those are just different ideas that I have. Um, so that's my question.
Okay, I can make reference to the first two, the shirts and the banners, as far as the candidate forum that you brought up. I'm not entirely too sure. I'll, I'll also clarify that and um, I'll um, send an email first thing tomorrow. Um, the shirts, I did, um, Chair de Court does have um, shirts, there are polo shirts. They're not specifically printed for the Nanakuli Board, but they're general polo shirts showing that you are a board member. It's actually the shirt that I'm wearing and it's, it's conveniently black and gold. That wasn't, that, that was just general, but it does, it does show for Nanakuli, of course. But um, it is encouraged that you guys do wear the shirts at outreaches, whether it be, of course, cleanups or if it's um, parades or whatever you guys um, participate in, just to show that you are a board member. Um, the banners, yes, the banners are something that, of course, you can go to the NCO, we would like a banner for such and such, whatever it is, as long as that we have ample time to get it done. You know, of course, if there's a, say for example, there was a event that you guys would like to do to create a banner for and you, it's tomorrow and you guys let us know at 10 o'clock tonight, then of course, we couldn't be able to do that. So as long as there's enough ample time, of course, we can make that happen. Uh, with the candidate, I'm not entirely too sure, I will clarify that. I know that that's something that was done before my time in the NCO, so this is something that's new to me. So I will, I will follow up and make sure that gets sent out.
Um, if we don't use the $1,000 this year, do we lose it? Or is it once, 1,000 per term or per year?
Okay, so the budget, um, it's not like a use or lose type of a thing. We do, of course, if you guys don't use it, then you guys are, aren't just like stripped of a budget. But it's something that it'll, it'll continue to carry over with board business as long as there's something that's allocated with it. We're not, it's not something that we're just gonna, okay, they didn't do anything for the year, that's taken away. It'll still kind of be there. It's like a pot for you guys to use.
Okay, and then uh, yeah, so that was my question with the deadline. Um, my question is, how many uh, board members have to participate in the community outreach-ish?
So there's no set number of community members that have to participate in the, the outreach. For example, if you guys make a motion to support, again, I keep using beach cleanup, this is a, this is as a general example. You guys make a motion, we would like to support this beach cleanup on this day at this time. And the board um, passes the motion to support, of course, whatever budget you guys allocate for that, of course, will be approved. Um, it doesn't, a necessary amount of board members isn't set. So say for example, only one of you can make it that day, say for example, emergencies come up or whatever it may be, then that doesn't um, negatively affect the board.
Okay, very good. I, I think that we all understand the concept is to collaborate and have as much board participation as possible. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that that didn't hinder us either. Okay. All right, very good. Uh, Board Members, any other questions?
Uh, so can we um, use it for a banner then? It, it's for the community outreach is when they ask us to like beach clean up and we want to let them know if not without our t-shirts or with that community t-shirt, we at least have a banner to show, oh, we're participating.
Um, just to clarify, Chair, do you guys have a community, you guys, okay? So it is encouraged to use the banner that the NCO did provide as far as like neighborhood board banner. Um, I believe if I'm not mistaken, there is a photo somewhere that of you and Member Corona, that you guys had participated in and you guys were holding the banner. It's encouraged for that, to use that to let people know, hey, the neighborhood board is here participating. Um, it is encouraged, also, I didn't mention this prior to this comment, but it is encouraged to take pictures as well as it is encouraged to wear the shirts. There are polo shirts, they are dry fit, so they are comfortable. But if you guys, it is recommended, but if you guys don't, you guys aren't going to be penalized either. It's just a recommendation.
Okay, very good. I don't even know where to go from.
I, I think, I mean, we missing two board members, um, that maybe want to give input as well as far as how to spend it. And then, but I think, did we want to have a uniform on the shirt? Was, did you say that it was free? It was, no?
Yeah, the shirt is from when we did our uh, installation ceremony, when they took us the, yeah.
The shirt, did he say the shirts and the bag was free? Oh, okay, okay. Yeah. Oh, okay, 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 okay. I guess maybe over email, we can talk about the, because it was agendas, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, on the email.
Okay, very good. Can we move on to the next agenda? Okay, 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 very good. All right. Um, so uh, next on the agenda item is approval of Tuesday, September 19th, regular meeting minutes. And my apologies, I did not put that on the agenda last month. Uh, so uh, approval on September 19th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Uh, any edits?
Sorry about that. For September, it was not included in the mailout. That's my apologies. Um, that, that is something that is on our NCO website, the confirmed minutes. Um, but it is not included in the mailout. The October ones were. Um, um, was, did anyone not receive their mailout by chance? I know what, I know some other boards had that issue. You did? Okay. The, the physical copy of the September was not included in the mailout. But if you guys would like to do the, would like to table that and do the October minutes, we could do that as well.
Okay, very good. So we'll defer that to next month when we have a chance to look over the meeting minutes. Okay? Uh, then approval for Tuesday, October 17th, regular meeting minutes. Any corrections? Any, Board Member Corona, did you have something? If, if you can use your microphone, microphone.
I make a motion that we approve the October 17th regular meeting minutes as, as, as written.
Okay, very good. Uh, Okay, very good. Uh, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay? Any abstentions? Okay, approval of Tuesday, October seventeenth, regular meeting minutes. Um, uh, moving on to, oh, yep, September twenty-twenty-three, board member attendance at community meetings. I'll give it over to Jeffrey to do a roll call for community board, uh, for board members.
Okay, do a roll call really quickly. I'm gonna go down the, just again, just in alphabetical order, um, Member IO. Um, I'll circle back around to Member Augustine, who has stepped out at this time. Uh, Tector?
Um, I attended the Aho Pua meeting on, on Nana Kuli and, um, the town hall, right? Town hall at Nana Kuli, which is, uh, Darius' meeting and our PTSA meeting and Parks and Rec, also the education and Department of Health. Health and Sa- Safety, that is. Oh, okay, yeah. That was it. Just the town hall.
Gotcha. Uh, Chair de Court?
Okay, uh, uh, Department of Transportation, uh, Town Hall with the Representative Keela, uh, Neighborhood Security, oh, sorry, that Town Hall was on September fifth. Uh, Neighborhood Security Watch on September eighth. Testified for Bill thirty-nine, oh, wait, yes. Testified for Bill thirty-nine on September twelfth and, oh, uh, PTSA. No, sorry. I apologize. Uh, yeah, that's it for me.
Uh, Kia?
None.
Myers? And Corona?
Uh, um, well, I, I attended that, the landfill meeting hosted by Kokuna Ina at the, um, in October. Uh, the YNI Sustainable Community Plan CPAC Committee Meeting. Uh, YNI Sustainability Community Plan Community Meeting, uh, which was just held, uh, in October. And then, uh, the Sustainable Community Plan Community Meeting was done in November uh, last week, and then, uh, the, the distribution at, uh, Nana Kuli Protestant Church, uh, October. So, thank you.
That is everybody. Um, I'm not too sure where Member, uh, Member Augustine, uh, went, so we'll skip her for the time being.
Did you, did you take minds as well?
Did you do, Board Member Myers?
Oh, oh, no, I do, yeah. It was.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Did you want all of September and October?
Um, I believe it is just, um, September for this agenda item.
And then you're gonna come back around for October? Okay. So for September, it was the Sustainable Plan, uh, YNI Sustainable Plan Meeting. And then, um, Pro City Neighborhood Board Meeting and YNI Neighborhood Board Meeting. And, um, was the Town Hall on for, for Keela? Yep. DOT, um, for Keela. And that's it for September. And then I'll wait for you to come back in October.
Okay, uh, very good. And then moving on to October twenty-twenty-three, board member attendance at community meetings, giving it back over to Jeffrey.
And I'll go down, uh, Member IO. Augustine's still not at, here at this time. Tector? He's also not here. Um, Chair de Court?
Uh, YNI Neighborhood Board, Nana Kuli High School Homecoming Parade, Unity Sign Waving at Nana Kuli High School, uh, Keiki Neil at Aha Ina Cafe and Arc of Safety Harvest Time. And that's it for me.
Member Kia?
None.
Member Myers?
YNI Sustainable Community Plans Meeting, um, YNI Neighborhood Board Meeting, virtual, um, OHA Meeting, Office of Hawaiian Affairs DOT Meeting, BAE Meeting, NRM Meeting. All under the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Yeah, and then that's it.
Uh, Corona?
Yeah, I made a mistake. I, I saw, like, my eyes saw October. I didn't see the September, so I was giving you stuff that, and I think I did that, that Bill thirty-nine with, uh, then it, on September, so you can add for me for September if that's not too late, uh, for, uh, Bill thirty-nine. And then was it October we did the, uh, um, Homecoming Parade? And so you, you can put that additional down for the Homecoming Parade. And then also for, uh, um, October, well, YNI Board Virtual. Okay, and then that's it.
Okay, so for Members Augustine and Tector, since you guys just came back in, uh, we just went over agenda items for the, if the board member attendance for any September or October community meetings. Uh, Member Augustine, did you attend anything in the months of September or October? Community, community meetings, parades, anything like that?
I, for Septu-, uh, September, I delivered, uh, my child, so I was out on maternity. And October, uh, I attended the Park and Rec Committee Meeting as well as the, uh, two committees that I chair, Education and Public Health and Safety. For, oh, no, I apologize. You went way far back. I apologize. Um, no events for October.
I attended the, um, Nana Kuli High School Parade too. That was in September, right? Well, October, yeah. Um, and I believe that was the last. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Is that everyone? Okay, all right, very good. Moving on, uh, okay, so Hawaiian Affairs Committee assigning a chair, term year, current date, uh, to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have any board members that would like to chair the Hawaiian Affairs Committee?
I can do that. I'll volunteer.
Okay, Board Member Tector, uh, chairing the Hawaiian Affairs Committee. Um, and then, uh, next we have our OMPO representative, uh, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, Chair. Uh, we need a board member to be assigned to that, so, uh, be pretty much, uh, just like the transportation, but on a federal level. Um, so if anybody would like to chair the OMPO, uh, Committee, we need somebody for that as well. Okay? None? All right, okay. All right, uh, let's see. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Uh, we will go ahead with, uh, Transportation. Chair David Corona, if you have a Transportation Report for us on your committee meeting, go ahead.
Uh, we were packing them in. I had me plus one. So we did not have a quorum. Um, but, uh, it was Mr. Lamford that was there with me, and so we did discuss the, uh, uh, what the DOT, um, brought up regarding the speed humps in Maile, um, that we, um, don't quite necessarily agree with a couple of locations or one of the locations and, uh, was hoping that, uh, George from DOT would make it there, but, uh, he's out of office right now, so I can't get ahold of him. Um, so we want to try to revisit, revisit that, but they, uh, are supposedly doing it November, December timeframe. Um, so we'll have to get back, try to reach out to him on that. And then the second part was, uh, uh, when I had done the committee, uh, meeting times, um, it conflicted, I think, with the Parks and Recs Committee. So I moved it. So now the, uh, uh, Transportation Committee will be on the third Wednesday, um, of every month. Um, and so I'm gonna recess December unless there was something which there wasn't at tonight's board. Nothing's been directed so far, so I'll recess for, uh, um, December and pick up again in January. That's all I had for Transportation.
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions for Chair Corona regards to Transportation? If not, we'll go ahead and move over to, oh, sorry.
I do, um, so it kind of overlaps a little bit with, uh, Public Health and Safety. There were a lot of concerns that were brought up in my meeting that overlapped with Transportation, so I'm wondering if we can collaborate uh, as far as having, possibly having, uh, Public Health and Safety and Transportation, uh, on the same day simultaneously, so I can maybe work with you on, um, uh, on that, yeah. So the questions were safety for the lights, uh, coming in from Kahhi Point and the streetlights that the park and wrecks are not properly lit as well, so safety, uh, for that. And I think having you there will be able to relay some of the concerns uh, as far as, uh, safety and Transportation is, is concerned.
Okay, very good. Uh, board members, any questions? Uh, just a really brief comment. Board members, uh, thank you so much for your participation in these committees and also chairing it. I just really want to highlight the importance of having these committees is really to gather all of the information, the needs of, of our community and, uh, taking it to our legislators to, uh, propose some kind of resolution, bill, uh, encouragement when it comes time to testimonies. So, uh, the committees play a very, uh, critical part uh, of our committee where the concerns are just a little bit more, um, there's a little bit more time to work on them. Uh, so when we are having our committee meetings, let's keep that at the forefront, that, that this will be uh, generated as a result of some kind of legislation, whether that be on a county level or on a state level, whether it be bills or resolutions or letters in support or letters in oppose to what state agencies are doing. So just wanted to make that as a reference. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on, uh, to our Housing Committee. Housing and Zoning Chair, David Corona, go ahead.
It was me plus zero, so, uh, I did not have the meeting.
Okay, very.
Um, I do have, but the one thing I have, I did get an email from a community member, uh, talking about there is a developer, um, that does sustainable type and Calh- Calh- Calholy, uh, type projects. They're looking to possibly do something in, in our area. Um, so I reached out to them to try to get more information, but they never got back to me, so I'm kind of in limbo right now. But, um, as part of housing and zoning, what I did do is I go to the DPP website and they have, uh, um, an area on there where about, as my single-use permits and, uh, majors and minors and such that for, you know, whenever they have applications submitted, I can look there to see about any, any, anything coming in our area, but there was nothing on there for our area time, other than the, the landfill extension, but that was it.
Okay, very good. And then also, members of the public, if you would like to be a participant in our committee meetings, uh, please feel free to contact our chairs. Uh, and we are gonna move on to, oh, I, I apologize, any questions for the, uh, Housing, um, Committee? Board members saying none. Okay, we're gonna move on to Parks and Rec, uh, Park and Recreation Chair, Mapuana Tector.
Hi, uh, we did have quorum. Uh, we had six members that attended, well, people that came. And we discussed basically, um, our officers, role, the secretary, so Naomi and Edward showed up as, um, as well as Malia and then, uh, three other public, uh, community people, so that was good. And they discussed safety in Nana Kuli Park, just the parks that they actually use, the step downs when there's no lights, right after the football, um, uh, is done, the lights go off. And then unless you know the park, you know where the sidewalk is and step up or step down. Um, but there's a lot of, um, places where I need to mark that's not safe. And that's what we're trying to do, is establish that and try to get more, um, participating community people. And it was, it was very interesting. Uh, as far as the bathrooms, the lighting, there was very dim light. I don't understand that. Just by the entrance, there's lights, but in, in the actual bathroom, there are no lights. So I don't know if the kids, like, do target practice or it's just the cost. So these are line items that I will put together and then eventually submit to, um, our board as well as, um, the beaches along our West Coast. And I will work with, um, Tupula as well as, uh, the new Park and Rec for improvements. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board member, any questions for Parks and Rec? Okay, Board Member IO?
Um, the Parks and Rec, I, I, I'm just going back in my memory, uh, but I think it's in our notes as far as the minutes in the last, uh, board that we had, and I think Dave, Dave was here at the time because we were talking about Parks and Recs. But the members that was on that committee was myself, Joe Okana. Um, I'm, I'm trying to think of the other gentleman. Mr. Diamond was on the board, was on our committee also. And then we came up, uh, also the other gentleman was, uh, Mr. Maderis. And Mr. Maderis wrote up a resolution now. We wrote up a resolution, okay? Line items were mentioned. They were written down. And so having done all of that, we submitted that and had a budget for that, seriously. And then submitted it. And then they said we got the money, and then they said they didn't have the money. So i- in my, in my opinion, here we are, we, we're gonna redo the same thing over again, yeah? When we can just go back to our minutes and find that resolution, reestablish it again, saying that we're gonna review this resolution and we're gonna, okay, the same resolution. Because we did all these line items, like fix the bathroom lights was one. Fix the bathroom toilets was another one. Fix the sink that were all smashed. Um, lighting was most important though, was really important. And then the other one that was really, really, was for the, uh, the storage of things for the maintenance guy because there was breaking in the lifeguard's, uh, room. So all of that was considered, not just for Nana Kuli Beach Park now, was for Zablan, was for Black Rock. And they said they had the money. And then we submitted that resolution. And then nothing became of it because they said they didn't have the money. So can, can we just, uh, go back and find in our, uh, Nana Kuli Board Number Thirty-six, back, back in those minutes where we did approve the res- back, back in those minutes where we did approve the resolution and we got it done? And now, I, I hear what you're saying, yeah, we're gonna redo the same thing again, okay? With this Board, with this Board, yes.
Thank you, I'll take your, um, mana'o and revisit the minutes and just take it from there. A spinoff, so I'm not reinventing the wheel that's already created. I appreciate it, and, um, with me missing your meeting, I wanted to attend, I too wanted to compromise and change the day so I could attend yours, but since you're okay with moving it to the third Wednesday, I'm gonna keep it the second Wednesday, um, because of the Park and Rec, uh, Walt, uh, corresponding with him, he's, he's good with that. So I appreciate your changes so I can attend your meetings.
Yeah, sure, and, and Leanne down there at the, at the Community Park was very, um, um, understanding and, uh, wouldn't have made the change already through NCO, so I got the permit already, so I'm good to go. And I've got it split up, so I've got both, both my Committees, so depending on the, on the load, I can, I can, I've got flexibility where I can combine one, both Committees into one night, or I can have it every other month, you know what I mean? So, I, I got a little flexibility there, so she worked out well of me, so yeah, worked out.
Very good, okay, board member Myers?
Um, you mentioned that you had six members, are there voting members? Because we didn't ratify any members from the community at this Board. Oh, okay, just Board members, so- Yeah, but Community members, I didn't hear about them at the Board level to ratify them, because people can't come and go. Oh, okay, okay. Oh, minutes, okay, yeah. Ratified, okay, next one, yeah. Okay, awesome, just looking to get off the right foot, yeah, thank you.
Okay, very good, all right, we're moving on to, uh, Education Committee, Chair Malia Augustine.
Thank you, we had our Education Committee Meeting at the Park and Rec Nanakuli Kalanianaole Beach Park, every second Tuesday, uh, we had six people present, Board Member Tector and Board Member IO. And we, uh, appointed, I appointed Board Member IO as my Vice Chair, and appointed Tector, Board Tector as my Secretary. So we, uh, are going through the policies and procedures. We opened up con- uh, community concerns, and the concerns that were brought up were to, uh, refer back to see the Grow Your Own Teachers Program, to see how many in the community had taken advantage of that program that existed, as well as Teach for America and housing and benefits that are, uh, in the works to support, um, community members, not only those who are coming from the mainland to teach here, they would like to have, um, housing for the local, uh, teachers as well. And questions to the Board of Education regarding the goals of the curriculum, to see if there's common core for all grades, why our children's books are being photocopied and distributed rather than, uh, hard copied books being distributed to students for access, or even having books available within the classroom, uh, with the curriculum on hand, as well as questioning the quality of education regarding, uh, some substitute teachers. So these are, these are interesting comments that were brought up, and wanting to bring back, uh, access to childcare for those families who are struggling to go to work and support their children, uh, children attending school, so the, uh, attendance rate is a big concern of the community, requesting government assistance to support families who are, uh, in need of childcare. So those are some of the concerns. There is a survey available as well, I will email that out to the Board, and if the Board can help in disseminating that survey, the questionnaire is just, uh, asking, uh, for recommendations on ways to address the attendance and graduation, low attendance and graduation rates within the community, as well as, uh, recommendations on how to support the education system as is.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, uh, board members, any questions for Education Committee? Questions, uh, okay, I just want to comment, uh, board member, uh, Augustine, with regards to the childcare, uh, might be worth, uh, seeing, um, Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke, she has a Kiki Plus program and they're kind of slow stepping, opening up in schools and things like that, so it might be worth reaching out to see if they have any kind of projections on opening up here, uh, in the Nanakuli Maile area, uh, for next school year, or maybe even the following school year, just what their plans are for our area. Uh, okay, and we are moving on to, uh, Public Health and Safety, uh, again, Chair Malia Augustine.
Thank you, this meeting took place same, same location, same day, second Tuesday, and, uh, we had, again, uh, six in attendance. Board Member IO as Vice Chair, appointed as Vice Chair, and Board Member Tector appointed as Secretary. So, uh, safety concerns were brought up regarding, uh, lighting on the trafficways, as well as for the beach parks, and concerns were brought up relating to, um, cross rock and pedestrian access. They were very happy with the updates on the roadways. The only thing was the entrance coming down the hill by Black Rock, um, was to have the flashing lights when someone is crossing, because there's that, the, there's a border and perimeter in the center line, so it's hard to see, there's so much going on as you're coming down, it's hard to see that there is a pedestrian coming through. So that was a concern that was brought up, and I then referred it to say that that's, that we're overlapping into Transportation, so people are bringing up safety concerns that then, um, I wanted to relay to Transportation Committee. We also had a concern relating to the Board of Water Supply, that's something we can direct, um, an email to them, asking where the water is coming from and the quality of the water, and a report to go to the public for that. Uh, someone had mentioned that the aquifer comes from Waipahu, where does the aquifer, um, the water go that's in our aquifer from Y-Night? A request went in for the sewage to be, uh, a separate meter, uh, regulated by the water rather than the bill coming through as one. So, but there was a report from the Mayor clarifying that today. And lastly, homelessness on the, on the coast is high concerns for Mercer and where the waste is going for the homeless living on the beach, and how, uh, if we can get a report as mentioned by, um, Board Myers, uh, to have an update on the water quality within the beach parks. That's it.
Okay, very good, uh, board members, any questions? Uh, Public Health and Safety for Chair, uh, Board Member IO?
Uh, it was just, uh, in regard to that same meeting that I was there, I believe we had seven. There was a couple, and there was two ladies in the community, and then myself, Tector, and, uh, uh, the Chairman, I believe. Seven total, I think.
Seven total, sorry.
Correct, yeah. Um, what, what was brought up too, and that's in regards to, uh, Jermaine brought that up earlier in this meeting regarding the safety at the school, yeah? He said the SRO program. So I brought that up in, in this meeting because it was part of safety, and yet, at the same time, it was part of education, because that would be in the school, the high school, or the intermediate school, or even the elementary school. Um, so I brought that up because I was an SRO at one time before, I had a police department up in the mainland. So, that was brought up, so we're trying to find out, um, how we can instill or bring back, or actually instill the program here in the City and County of Honolulu, because they do have this program on the island of Maui now. In the City and County of Maui, they have an SRO program. So, if Maui has one, after having this devastating fire, I don't see why Honolulu Police Department cannot have one, SRO program. And that was my, my link to this thing, but thank you, uh, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, additionally, I, uh, had a conversation with Complex Area Superintendent tonight, and we will be meeting with the Principals coming up, uh, next week, Thursday, to better understand the needs of the schools as far as education and safety is concerned, thank you.
Okay, very good, uh, before we just kind of wrap this session, this portion of Committee Reports, uh, again, I really want to implore, uh, Committee Chairs to work towards putting these needs towards some type of legislation, because we're going to be recessing in December, uh, and our next Neighborhood Board in January, it will be after the legislative session starts, uh, we'll have a very small window that we can introduce, uh, legislation, I think it's on the state side. So please, um, if I could just, uh, ask you or encourage you that when you are doing your Committees, um, if you can think along that lines of how our state legislators can best represent us during this time of open session. Council is, is, is not limited as far as time, but state is, and I don't want to miss the window, because, uh, House of Representatives do have a limit that they can introduce bills. So if we can really think along those lines, uh, uh, Board Member Augustine, I love your idea of contacting the Principals, seeing what's going on in the schools, uh, and, you know, if there's any area that I can help you in, please let me know. Uh, but let's kind of have that goal set in mind, that, um, we can have our Committee Meetings and that our January Board, we can propose what type of legislation our Board is gonna support for our legislators to introduce during the session, so we have a lot of, um, ability to do a lot of great things, and we don't want to miss that window of that legislative session. Uh, that's all I have to say about that, um. Other than that, we're gonna move on, uh, to announcements. Our next, uh, regular Board Meeting is gonna be Tuesday, January sixteen, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM at Nanakuli Public Library via WebEx platform, and the Board will recess, uh, December twenty twenty-three. Uh, did you have something?
Yes, um, we have a PTSA meeting at Nanakuli High School next Thursday. So our meetings are every last Thursday of the month, six o'clock. And I encourage the community as well as the parents and students, so far we have ninety, seventy-nine members, um, at least, hmm, fifty-four are students and the rest are parents. So, um, I encourage everybody to show up or whoever you know, thank you.
Awesome, very good, there's anything else? Okay, uh, go ahead, Board Member Augustine.
I just want to say, uh, mahalo nui loa to all of our Board, thank you for serving, and this is our last meeting of the year for twenty twenty-three, so I do have a magnet saying, mahalo for serving in twenty twenty-three for the Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board. So this is all for you folks, and, uh, we appreciate all the work, hard work that you, um, that you do for our community, and we hope you continue to, um, play the rest of your time, but continue to keep in mind the community, and we will see you at Christmas on the Avenue. Additionally, we have a QR code and a, uh, Instagram and Facebook page. So if you go to Instagram, it's Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board, that's the handle, as well as, uh, Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board for Facebook. So go ahead and follow us, we hope to keep you updated on events and things that are happening. Our Neighborhood Committee Meetings were posted on there, and so in the future, we hope to continue to update the community on dates and changes, thank you.
Awesome, very good, uh, thank you very much, Board Member Augustine, Tector, for this generous, uh, gift, we appreciate it. Um, if that's it, uh, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn. Uh, I will wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Board Member Myers said it best, Jesus is the reason for the seasons, so let's not forget that. Um, we look forward to, uh, enjoying everybody's company at Nanakuli on the Ave. Have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Aloha and God bless everyone, and we are adjourned.